Good evening, everybody. I've been told the live feed is up. We just checked webex and we know that is working. And so I'd like to call to order tonight's study session of the Mohammed Seymour Board of Education. It is 7:02 PM on Monday, October 5th. This time, I'd like to remind anyone attending in person to please sign in if you're a guest. We'd like everyone to silence your cell phones. I'd like to remind our visitors, in order to facilitate the meeting, we ask those who wish to make public comments at the board to read the visitor guidelines found on the table outside the door, complete the public participation form, and get those to dawn. And I have, it looks like, five of those right now. Can we have roll call for attendance, please?
Giles?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Hennessy?
Here.
Schultz?
I see her.
Elena, can't hear you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Larson? Here. Hennessy?
Here.
McCall?
Here. And could we stand, please, to the pledge? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Board members, you have seen the agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Larson?
Is there a second?
Second.
Approve the second, and is there discussion on the agenda? We have a roll call.
Larson?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Keith?
Schultz?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes. Okay, we've got five individuals you've asked to speak tonight. And we'll start with Russ Taylor. Russ?
Well, to ask for a topic, I can talk on several topics.
You get five minutes, Russ.
I don't usually talk that much. I just touch on a few things, just in general. And I know other people here are worried, or maybe they're going to talk more on things. One of the things, I've looked at the plan, and I kind of looked at roads and things like that. And I have driven across the properties and different things down here. And I think you're going to discuss it, but I'm concerned about the road wandering up through that ditch and up through to the corner was talked about last week. I think you need to reconsider that. I've been in subdivisions here for 48 years. In fact, today's my birthday.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Russ.
But I think it's important, I could be home for a while.
I am.
But this is real important to me, and I've helped bring people here for 48 years. So I think it really needs to think, we need to know about these roads and long-range plans. Because some of the things that are in the schools now seem to be the right thing to do at the time. We were involved in a lot of it, our family, where the high school is, where Lincoln Trail is, kind of coordinated that 13 acres. But you've got to think way out there. And we didn't necessarily, but we were involved in it a lot. As you know, I sell houses, and I'm selling houses in other towns because people want to go to school. And people are going where they can go five days a week. So I've got people going to schools that don't have the reputation of Mohammed. And I think the five-day-a-week thing needs to think about. I think the other thing with it, which is pretty direct, but I paid taxes here a long time, and I've had kids in school here for a long time, and I still pay a lot of taxes. Everybody here pays taxes to get their kids in school five days a week. So they're paying taxes, teachers are getting paid full-time. I don't think they're going to get half-time pay, so I think they need to get to work. And I shouldn't have said it that way, but I'm just saying it. So I guess you need to think about the plans a little bit more, and I'm concerned about that crossing the river where it is and that curve. I think the community needs to know what the plan is and be able to see it, rather than just going across the river. And that's village, maybe more than you. But those are my concerns, and thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
You've got up to five minutes.
I'll try and make it as free about that.
You've got five.
If you've ever heard me talk less than three minutes, I'll hear you. Your question. I've got a couple of things I want to talk about. One is the IGA that you passed at last board meeting. Second is a facility plan that you've got coming up and the agenda that you've shown for it. First, my concerns with the IGA, I have, you know, I know that you and the village have worked long and hard on this for quite some time. I think we could have done a better job. And I think we still have time to do a better job. You get one shot at this. Once it's done, it's done. And we have a real problem in the community with our schools being buried in a residential neighborhood, with all the roads and traffic of the school going through the community, and it's really tough. So I think that the current plan, as it was passed, I have concerns that it forces residential traffic from the south up through the school system and out. It also is supposed to force it over to Prairie View. However, I think Prairie View exit, where it goes out on Prairie View, is in the wrong location as it cuts across the property. I also don't like the idea that cutting directly across the property at the school, plus it's in the wrong location where it should go if you were going to go across the school. There are other alternatives for that traffic, to go north through Conaway Farms and not come across your property. I also am concerned that the IGA did not have any mention or discussion or was not included in it, was what was going to happen with the property that's across from Churchill on the east side of the road that could become residential. And the last thing you want is a bunch of driveways, people's driveways, on that road. That needs to be a part of that agreement now with the village so you can control that and not have a real problem with your traffic, again, being shovelled by all the residential traffic. Let's see, what else have I got? One last thing is, I really do not believe, you're talking about doing a long-range facility plan. I think that's good. However, making this decision on a road, where you're going to put it, what you're going to do with your property, you're kind of throwing darts at a board. You really don't know what you want. And to agree to this right now is not good business. You need to complete your facility plan and come up with an overall program of where you want and what you want. And then you can decide how you want to handle the traffic. I know there's a lot of pressure because of a previous IGA agreement, so that I just throw my nose and say whatever. There's a better way to do this, and that's what we need to be doing. On the facility plan, I looked through that. It seems to me like it's the first step of several. I need a little more clarification on it. It appears that what you're doing there is basically determining your needs. You're doing a needs assessment, you're going to do a really good job of that, I'm sure. However, it doesn't say then how you're going to solve those needs. And that may be the next step that comes, but I don't see those steps. So my suggestion to you is, if you want to put together a complete facility plan, put all the steps in and talk about what you're going to address, one at a time. What it is right now, everybody's going to wonder, well, okay, well, let's say you decide you need something. Well, how are we going to get it? That's another whole step that needs to be addressed. I do believe that what you're doing in here is appropriate, and I think it probably is. A year is way too long. That part of that plan should be done in six months. Do not let it linger for a year. If you can't do that in six months, you need to get a different advisor. Because that's just too long for that part of the plan. Now, I know a lot of that has to do with academics. And that may require a little bit more plan, but when it talks about facilities, which is the primary benefit of this plan, I don't think you need to go out for a year to have that study, that portion of the study. The next step of what to do and how to solve that need is, may take another six months. But you need to define that, because if you don't have a goal in mind, you're not going to have success. You follow what I'm saying? Just like you teach your kids. You've got to have a goal, you've got to know where you're going. Then you know what you're going to get. Right now, you have not got that. You've thrown some ideas out there that you want to discuss, but you don't have all the steps that are needed to get progress. We want progress here. And we want to support you with progress for the community. But we need to know where we're going and have a little better plan than what we see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin?
I'm just probably going to echo kind of what Russ and Judy have already talked about, but my concern, as well as those gentlemen, is the location of the roads. I'm not opposed to roads. I know you've got to have interest and get through the property and get proper traffic, but I'm concerned about running, if you go out and down through Conaway Farms, go to the railroad track, running buses down there and kids there, I don't think is the best way to do it. And I think you really need to concentrate on taking Churchill Road down, look at the topography of the ground, go across the Prairie View. But in doing that, you really need to get a land man, that's a land planner, that can talk to you about retention ponds, drainage, all those things. Because right now, with just throwing a road in there, could be an impediment to locating the extension of this school or a junior high. I recognize the need for additional schools, because we are a growing community and so forth. But you've got to plan how the drainage is going to happen, the topography of the ground, and your buildings, where you're going to want to site your buildings. And that should be the first thing before you start designing roads, in my opinion. And I don't think it's a position for the architect, who everybody thinks, when you talk to architects, they do a wonderful job designing buildings and maybe citing buildings, but they aren't land developers. You needed a proper engineer that has done this for other school districts to understand where they're going to go and how they're going to be placed. And the other thing is, make them, Martin, make them bite that. You've got plenty of ground right now, you know, get enough to ride away so you can have a bull bar, you can have turn lanes, you can have sidewalks, all the things that you need for a school. And don't squeeze them down to where it's so narrow where the traffic can't get around them. So I would like to approve, reconsider the IGA, and, you know, nothing's not going to happen sometime, but put it in the right place. And then as far as your facilities plan, I think that's quite a project, and I commend you for moving forward to that. I think that needs to be addressed sooner than later. And get it targeted, as to what, kind of like Judy was saying, you know, get it done in a timely fashion. Not be happy to answer any questions. And, you know, I have been a subdivision out here in Mohammed since 1964, and I've done some land planning, so we know a little bit about roads. So that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, bud.
Nikki?
Good evening. My name is Nikki Galler. I'm a parent and taxpayer of this community. Tonight, I'd like to dissect stakeholders. It seems as though all stakeholders are not equal, nor should they be. However, some stakeholders are not upholding their responsibilities and lawful duties. Stakeholder one, you, the Board of Education, is a stakeholder lawfully bound to uphold a variety of powers and duties. In the School Board Policy Handbook, Section 2.20, Powers and Duties of the School Board, Number 19, stands out, which states, "Communicating the school's activities and operations to the community and representing the needs and desires of the community in educational matters." End quote. Let me repeat that. "Representing the needs and the desires of the community in educational matters." Huge problem here. This community, i.e. parents and taxpayers, were surveyed early in the COVID pandemic, and a vast majority, over 60%, I believe, wanted in-person attendance in some form. Fast forward many months, and now the parents are being ignored, not even asked again. The parents should have been surveyed well in advance of our promised October 1st reevaluation date. Their wishes, according to Board policy, should have taken precedence, given the excellent numbers we're experiencing. Complete negligence on the part of the Board. And among BOE members, we have a serious disregard of duties. We've got Megan Hennessy sitting on her throne of privilege, passing down directives for, in her mind, the peons of Mohammed Seymour. According to her, us middle-class community members just aren't smart enough to know what we want. And because she doesn't send her children to MS schools in person, then we shouldn't. If this upsets you, it should. BOE members are elected to serve their constituents and not their own personal agenda, political ideals, or public interest groups, C-Section 2.80E exhibit. Certainly, Ms. Hennessy has every right to keep her own children on a remote or home school plan, but she has no right to choose this for community members regarding their own children, not my children's. And never mind Mr. Keith, who won't even turn on his camera for meetings. I won't really waste my time on him, but just list some Board policy for you all out there listening to look up, should speak volumes about his disregard and negligence of Board duties, C-Section 2.80, Special Attention to 2.100, 2.105, B.I.O.R. Stakeholder two, MSEA Teachers Union. I tried looking up MSEA's mission statement and could not find one, so I looked up some others. One states, "Advancing public education and advocating for the welfare of students, teachers, and staff." Here's where there's a disconnect. MSEA is advocating for its teachers, but I haven't heard much in the way of advocating for students. Here's another issue. One of our MSEA co-presidents does not live in MS School District, yet sends her own children to full-time school in her hometown. If this upsets you, that she fiercely is against sending MS children back to school for more than two days a week in person, it should. At all times, people in positions of leadership should live their personal beliefs and value system. It is absolutely hypocritical to argue against sending our children back to more in-person school when she sends her own for five full days a week in person. Maybe MSEA should conduct a survey asking six through 12 teachers how they feel about doubling their work due to their responsibility for full remote learners and hybrid learners. I'm sure they've had a lot to say at this point. Stakeholder number three, parents of MS students and taxpayers. According to Section 2.20, Number 19, it's obvious how this group should be represented, yet we're not. So let's right the ship. First and foremost, order a clear, concise, and unbiased survey to be sent to parents this week about return to school for in-person, four-day-a-week attendance by November 1st. Who will attend? Who will be full remote? Next, analyze the results and plan the course according to the majority, parent, and taxpayer response. Third, add the four-day in-person return to school by November 1st plan to your regularly scheduled meetings agenda for October 19th in order to revote. Finally, prepare for five days a week in-person attendance starting January 5th. Key points supporting this action?
Thank you, Senator.
Utilizing the parent survey is going to reveal 25% are going to stay on full remote, so class sizes will be smaller. K through 5 teachers will not leave Monday for planning because they're already predetermined cohorts for virtual full-remote students. Six through 12 teachers cannot sustain two modes of teaching, and they should also get into the cohorts for full-remote learners. It's not, I'm not a rocket science, but I'm certainly smart enough to know I surround myself with like-minded people. We all do. So I understand that some people email and want this, and some people email and want that, but only some are emailing. Find out what our entire community's parents and taxpayers want.
Time's up.
And then do it. Because a lack of a new survey for family preference at this point is not just a disappointment, it's complete negligence. Thank you.
Sunny?
If I leave a sign, can you hear me? I try to go. Just go like this, honey. Sometimes it's a lot better. Good evening. My name is Sunny McMurray. I'm a parent of three children in the Mohammed Seymour School District. One's at Lincoln Trail, one's at the junior high, and one is at the high school. As you know very well, our teachers are working harder than ever this year. We have outstanding professionals in this district, especially at the secondary level, who are putting in more time and energy than should be asked of them. Today, I received an email from a teacher, a high school teacher, that said, quote, "It has been a very difficult year. It's only October 5th. We've been in school about seven weeks, and yet I could hear the exhaustion in this teacher's message. Asking teachers to plan for and teach both in-person learners and remote learners is setting these teachers and our children up for failure. If they're doing several things halfway, they aren't doing any one thing well. Teaching online and teaching in person are two different art forms. Trying to combine the two doesn't work. I'd like to propose that the district instead cohort our secondary students as they have done for our elementary students. Our elementary teachers have a designated teaching model, either all remote or all in-person. They only have to plan for and implement that one model. Elementary children are never expected to interact with children online along with children in their classroom. They're interacting with either all in-person peers or all online peers, creating a much more cohesive environment. This same benefit and choice should be offered to our secondary teachers and students. I keep hearing that it is nearly impossible to create all remote cohorts at the junior high and high school levels. I'm sorry, but I don't buy that. Nothing is impossible for teachers when they set their minds to something and are given the freedom to think outside the box. Teachers are creative. It might take adjusting schedules so students are taking block schedule courses, or teachers may have a course load that looks different from a typical year. Her remote class sizes may be bigger than what the school would allow for in-person instruction, but I wouldn't call it impossible, and I would also argue that our students are worth the challenge. We recently went on our first in-person college visit, Ivy Junior High School. It was there that we learned that her class, the juniors, class of 2022, are essentially getting the shortest end of this COVID stick. Because of COVID, colleges around the country, many colleges, are waiving test scores for consideration of admission for this year's seniors. They understand that last year's GPAs might be skewed because students received completes instead of actual grades. They acknowledge that COVID derailed these students' hardest year in high school last year, limited their opportunities to take standardized tests, and may have affected grade point averages. But here's the kicker, this isn't going to be possible for our current juniors. Because high school students around the country are returning to in-person instruction, colleges have said that they are still going to hold these students, my daughter and the rest of her junior class, accountable for test scores and GPAs. They're going to be making sure that our students have demonstrated success in high-level college prep full-time courses. They're still going to be looking for high ACT and SAT scores for both admission and scholarships. And our kids are going to be competing with peers from neighborhoods and other states for spots in selective college programs against students who are in school full-time, learning all they can in a face-to-face environment. Choice matters for both teachers who need virtual, for both teachers who need to teach virtually, and for families who need to learn virtually. For teachers who prefer to teach in-person without the added stress of teaching hybrid classes, and for children who need to learn in-person. At the start of this school year, you offered families choices. You offered a full-remote option for those uncomfortable about returning to in-person instruction, and you also offered a hybrid model with the expressed intent to bring students back full-time in October. Specifically, you told families prior to selecting our choice, quote, "The goal of the blended model is to return to full in-person learning October 1st. Families that are uncomfortable with a full return should select the all-off-campus model." You stated the goal was to bring students back this month. I'm at a loss as to why you are now answering questions and addressing concerns that I would have thought would have been addressed back in July, when you told parents children would come back to in-person learning. While I understand concerns regarding health and safety should all students return to in-person learning, the reality is that all students will not return to in-person learning. Since virtual learning will remain in the second semester, classes will automatically be smaller than a typical year. In addition, if the district provides all virtual cohorts at the six through 12-grade level, as they have done at the elementary level, teachers who are at high risk or have concerns about in-person learning would still be able to continue to teach. Therefore, thank you, the conversation needs to shift to five-day-per-week full-time learning, either all remote or all in-person. The district has ways to support our teachers while still offering full-time in-person learning for all students who elect to participate. There are ways to support both teachers and students, and it's up to you to do it. My own kids, among hundreds of others, are counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Sunny? Okay. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in our public comment time tonight. And we're moving on to Item 6 on the agenda, Community Engagement. Dr. Hall?
Well, we set aside this meeting tonight to continue the discussion that began back on September 21st about community engagement initiative, specifically to take the time to talk about the document that's contained in the board packet, which, just a second, I will also put up on the screen. This is a draft of a charge for the Long Range Facility Planning Community Engagement Initiative. And again, this is in draft form, and the goal of the discussion tonight was to, for the Board to go through this and discuss if this is how they want this worded, or are there changes that you would like to make? Are these the intended outcomes? And whatever other components of discussion are necessary to move ahead with this. And then if there are any revisions to this document, then it would appear, we would revise it, and then this document would appear on the October 19th Board Agenda for Adoption, and then the process would then move ahead. And so we have also with us tonight, they were with us two weeks ago, but Damian Schleit with BLDD Architects and Rod Wright from Creative Entourage. So I will hand it off to you gentlemen, and if you want to jump in and add anything more to that introduction, and then table is open for discussion. Got to unmute Rod.
Yeah, okay, can you hear now?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just say a few words about the draft. As was said, it's in, I'm sorry, the charge, it's in draft form. It really, when you kind of boil it down, is pretty simple. It asks the community engagement process to look at what kind of challenges are facing the district in terms of facilities and opportunities for improving. It asks participants to kind of align facility planning with what your educational staff is trying to do in the classroom, so the facilities are in a sense, you know, function not only in physically good shape, but also functionally in terms of that alignment with curriculum and instruction. A big part of the charge is getting extensive community input on various options there may be to look at for a long-range facility plan. And so, you know, by the time the Board gets a report, there's extensive involvement in that. Another mention in the charge is for the group to do branding. When we work on community engagement programs, we almost always kind of give it a name, you know, so people can attend, you know, kind of engagement meetings that have a branding name to them. We have sometimes, for example, just to give you an example, I'm not saying it's exemplary or anything, use something like FACTS, Facility Advisory Committee for Tomorrow Students. That was in a district close, something like that, that gives a branding and can be used in communications. And then the charge asks for kind of all of this work to be done by, I think the date's November 30th of next year, so it's more than a year-long program. And reporting to the Board of Education for the Board to, and the charge doesn't assume a March 2022 referendum, but the timing would allow that in case the recommendations needed some kind of referendum for implementation. And we're not saying that it's going to go there. That's kind of up for the community to decide, but at least a timeline would allow for that. And in our kind of discussions, we were thinking about doing the organizational work during the rest of this calendar year, having some early engagement meetings of one kind or another during the spring semester. Sitting here today, it's hard to know what the nature of those will look like, but they could be virtual or in-person. Kind of taking the summer off from engagement, although I think the architects would be doing a lot of work during that period, and then finishing it or kind of driving it home with more engagement meetings in the fall, and hopefully by then, life... And hopefully by then, life will be back a little bit more to normal and we can have some community meetings where people actually come to meetings at that point in time. We'll just have to see. I think, I think if people can actually go to real-life meetings, it will have great attendance just because people will want to get out of the house after all this time, but won't be wrong about that. So anyway, that's, that's the charge, and there's no, no magic to it. And like was said, we can certainly, you know, make changes or edits in it. I think it's in about a third draft right now. The first draft I put together was not very good, and everybody worked to make it better. So with that, I don't, Damian has anything to add?
No, I think that's a good summation. And one of the keys to this, and we've repeated it, is the kind of step-by-step detail is not developed in a part of this charge because that's really the, the efforts of that facilitation team. So you'll see there's some broad-picture requests from the board as far as solutions and, and what a good facility plan will, will include. But ultimately, the way that goes about, you know, Rod was mentioning early engagement, you know, kind of the, the summer work being able to be a time that we further develop some solutions to come back in the fall. Those are our recommendations. You know, that could look slightly different as we start to talk to the community group on, on when we do these different, different pieces. One of those keys, though, regardless of determination of referendum or not, is the importance of those late-fall meetings. So we're seeing this as, yes, we've got 12 months to work with. In, in some ways, it's a luxury right now, it allows us to do some of this early engagement with the group. And, but that, that fall work, kind of, if you will, spreading it out to the end of next year is really important because that momentum and that clarity of information being fresh in people's minds is really a key component for any successful facility plan. You know, that is, is clear in mind as it, as it goes up to a potential question for, for approval, so.
And to follow up on, on what Damian was saying and something I should have said, the process we have in mind, and Damian talked about the facilitation team, and it does just that. That's why it's called facilitation. And it's all about process. And it will work with us collaboratively to develop a process for engagement that, that is right for your community. What we'll bring to the table is some best practices and some ideas that they can respond to. But they're all about process and, and making whatever ideas we bring to them about how to do engagement better and customizing it for the community. The community engagement meetings themselves, whether they're virtual or kind of y'all come community meetings that we like to have, are about product. And what I mean by that, that is the group where meeting after meeting will hear presentations, evaluate data and information, and begin working to kind of put together what will eventually be the long-range plan for presentation to the board. And it's kind of like a funnel. Things kind of get narrowed down as time goes by, where kind of some big-picture decisions are made based on those big-picture decisions, and sometimes we call them planning principles. Damian's team will put together various options, will let the participants brainstorm their own options, will put those together, cost them out, and eventually turn anywhere from eight to 20. I don't want to pick a number, but some large number of options will be narrowed down to, to, to what the final plan will be. But the community group is where the product occurs, and that's the group that will reach consensus at, at the end of this process on what, you know, what that long-range plan should look like. And that's reached consensus on a report that comes to the Board of Education. Of course, the board's responsibility, we're not taking that away, is to evaluate that and determine, you know, what steps need to be taken with it. It, it, it's a report to the, from a planning committee, but a great big huge one, I guess, is the way to think about it.
Rod, in just a few minutes, I'd kind of like to go through the document and see if there's things we wanted to rechange on that, and maybe you could lead us through that. But before we do that, I don't know if we've got process questions. And I know a question we've got for Damian is what is, what kind of costs can we expect to incur on this at our end, and like take just a minute, I guess, to talk about cost and process and then dive into the document.
Yeah, so I could jump in on that. So relative to kind of the process side and proposal, I'd sent over something. Did everybody on the board get an opportunity to, to see that document that I'd sent out?
I'm getting it printed off. Thank you.
No, was the answer to that.
Okay. Well, I had sent through, and the majority of this letter is actually things we've all discussed to this point as far as kind of the process and kind of going through, how do these different meetings and portions happen? What we're proposing ultimately is that with this scale of a process, being a part of community and wanting this to be successful, is that we're essentially presenting this as a deferred and contingent fee. So what we're doing is we're outlining that for essentially a retainer, if you will, table in January 21 of $20,000, we'll go through the entire process, we'll keep track of our time, with hourly rates and things like that included in there. And we expect it to be a, probably when all said and done, after drawing all solutions, probably a $60,000 effort to get through to referendum. If a referendum is successful, then we would bill for the remainder of those, those efforts beyond the $20,000. If there's a failure, as in we're not successful in helping the community to, to get to a plan and to get to a successful resolution for the district to be able to go forward with facilities plan, forego those fees and they, they go away, we weren't able to accomplish our work. So our goals with that are, we allow the district to have a manageable amount of dollars upfront that let us get the process going, let us really do the work that we feel is best suited to help the district be successful. The district then isn't in a position where they feel they need to hold back on, you know, our team to do the work that we need to do to get done. And then ultimately, we've got skin in the game that rides on the success of the process. So that's the way it's been written up and presented at this time. I'm happy to kind of discuss the thinking behind that.
Damian, can you please email that to the board so that those who are remote can have a chance to print those off?
You can ask them if I can take a picture of it.
I'd prefer an email.
I sent it, I forwarded it today. I'll do that again. Thought you had it.
Damian, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If I'm hearing you correctly, the timing for wrapping up next fall is such that we could be effective if we were to do a referendum in March of '22. Had you worked with other districts that have as, as much to have to decide on land use? And, and how do you recommend we throw that forward in the process so we could talk about those kinds of things this fall? Do you guys help with that? Do you know people who do that? And how have you dovetailed with land use versus facilities with other groups?
Yeah, so similar to some districts, it's enrollment growing, in our case, growing. Some districts, it's shrinking enrollment, sometimes it's extra buildings. I think land ownership and acquisition is just another criteria. I certainly think the, an ultimate facility plan obviously will have some impact on, on how the property out on the east side of town is utilized. No matter what, a solution comes, this seems to be a pretty clear understanding, something would, would happen out at that campus. Relative to some of the comments that were brought up early as far as detention and, you know, kind of plating for future use, that honestly is a bit further detailed. You know, that would kind of be a backend to this, where that's going to start to set some defined directives as far as we need to fit X number of lots in here, or this is how the detention is going to work. My understanding is the village has done some of that work to this point with that current placement of the road, with an understanding of how the, the two properties could function. But I think if that's one of the clear directives of the, the board, I think we outline that as, as something that needs to be solved. And I do think that in those initial meetings, those could be the, the focus. Those could, there could be some initial focus applied to siding and location, things like that.
So Damian, on the, on the fee side, there's a $20,000 retainer that's paid in January. And that we're billed monthly at things that go above that, I guess, kind of go on hold until we see what happens long-term. Any thoughts from districts where you've done this more in the past? What we could expect to look at in excess of the $20,000?
So I would expect, I would expect the efforts to be in that $60,000 range. That'd be like an all-in type of dollar figure. Now, if I was being asked to quote a, a full kind of fixed fee, some of that, honestly, I would want to understand how the community group would want to operate. And I've got in my mind an idea of kind of how many community meetings we'd probably end up with. And you saw that kind of in the proposal, you know, probably a couple in the spring, probably a couple in the fall. If the community group decided they wanted to have them weekly for a three-month period, that's a much different effort. You know, so that's where part of this as well gives the flexibility for the district to have that flexibility to support that. And I think ultimately too, if a, if a committee were starting to request that type of thing, I think we would, I think Rod and I would be a little hesitant to, you know, jump into it two feet, seeing that the efforts might outweigh the benefits to it. But yeah, that, that $60,000 figure is really kind of our expectation of all-in. And, and we want to build, you know, if you will, the difference until after passage.
We used to have an employee, Dan Burns, good friend of mine, that liked to say, "Community engagements like flying a commercial jet airplane." Takes a lot of preparation to take off, takes a lot of preparation to land. The time it's in the air is not as important to the overall cost as what you might, may think it will be. Now, that, 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 that doesn't take into account the work that Damian's team has to do with making presentations at some of those meetings. But still, there's a lot of upfront work and there's a lot of work at the end bringing it home. And, and we'll, as Damian mentioned, it'll be up to the facilitation team to kind of structure out the agenda and the process for those meetings. Again, with our help, we'll be setting the table for them. But, but, you know, the way we like doing the program is they, they take real ownership of it. It's theirs, it's not ours, it's not, you know, it's, you know, that we want them to feel like that they are putting it together with their best judgment, getting the best advice we can give them.
And Max, the only other cost that we're outlining in that proposal, you'll see there were some kind of unknown efforts, postage, printing, those types of things are outside of our, the fees that are provided. And, and are at this point are somewhat of an unknown. You know, I think I put in the letter, you know, approximately $3,000 would allow us to buy some phone numbers and emails to be able to get, you know, some good communication out to the community as a whole, not just the, you know, school district. And then also being able to do some of that postage and printing if the group decided to do some mailers and that type of thing. There, there was a, a follow-up sheet in there as well, just with some kind of not included pieces, just to be clear on what's, you know, what's included typically in a facilitation master planning effort. As we're looking at plans, one thing to keep in mind is that these are conceptual plans where we're looking at amount of addition, renovation, reconfiguration in a, in a very conceptual method. So we might be looking at plans and, you know, showing where a new STEM lab might be or where new fourth-grade classrooms would be. But it's at a, a concept level. Items such as like 3D massing, where we're actually going to start looking at, okay, what's each of these buildings look like? That's not a part of a typical facilitation and master planning effort. So that would be additional and above and beyond, you know, if you wanted 3D renderings of what the, the final plan is. Also, what's considered kind of a schematic design plan where every single classroom is sized out and all the janitor's closets are shown and those types of things. That's a higher level than what we'd be studying here because that's just, that's getting so far into the weeds at this level. So that's, that's why very clearly we're calling them out as conceptual plans because schematic plans are, are a different, a different animal. But they will give us the ability to clearly show where additions would happen, where renovations could happen, buildings that could be retired or replaced with new facilities. And then kind of the breadth of reconfiguration or system upgrades that would happen in any of the existing buildings. That would be able to be clearly defined and some pretty quality budgeting dollars attributed to that to, to create these master planning solutions.
So as I look at the proposed schedule, kind of part one of that this spring is really kind of the brainstorming piece, right? And it's kind of, let's look at all the options, let's see what the community wants, what ideas the community has. I'm assuming over the summer, where it says, "BLD is developing solutions based on community input," we're going to narrow it down somewhat to what we think the primary options may be. Is that fair?
I, I'd say yes and no. I'd say that the spring work is, I think somebody put it at one time, is casting the white net. That allows us to get out all those different ideas. Now, we may, I wouldn't go into the summer with the goal necessarily to narrow down. However, as we start to explore them, they might, in essence, narrow themselves. There might be things that seem very different from one another that in reality, as you start to study them, come out to be very similar solutions. But the goal would be that as many as possible, I don't want to go back to the community with 20, but we, we'd want to be going back to that facilitation team and, and kind of vetting some of that initial feedback with that group to understand, hey, do these seem redundant? Is the, the slight variation between these two clear? Or does it muddy the water and we should just throw one of them out? That'll be some of the input we'd want to hear back. And of course, we'd give our opinions on, on what we see, but essentially, yeah, that allows us to kick that off and then be able to come back in the fall and really be focusing instead of on educating the community on the background and the input of curriculum and, you know, what shape our buildings are. And we'll really be talking in those, you know, a couple of meetings of just about solutions. And I think we can get some really great work, you know, done kind of in that format.
It just seems to me like over the summer is where a lot of the work will be done that will generate the cost. I guess, is to explore solutions. So I don't, you know, if we come out of the, if we come out of the spring with, with a set of ideas that look really good and feasible and some others that, you know, we, we thought about it, but they appear not to be as good. I would think we wouldn't spend as much money.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, I see what you mean, yes. And, and our efforts over the summer months, we're, we're not going to be, you know, cranking on this daily. Those summer months really are, it gives us the opportunity to study them. You know, and the ones that the group and the district feel are viable. Also, part of it is that we don't have the opportunity to go back to the community during that time because it's summer. It's a really hard opportunity to pull the community together. So rather than trying to force the issue and try to get people to come out and have under-attended meetings, we had that in there kind of as a buffer that gave us plenty of time to explore whatever options we wanted and then come back strong for the community outreach in the fall. And then come back strong for the community outreach in the fall. But yeah, you're right, Max, we're not, I I have no interest in just spinning my wheels on something that. Isn't feasible or is just, you know, outright a poor use of funds, absolutely.
Either in the spring and in the fall or both, a piece that we've not talked about too much is. Is, you know, hearing from your financial advisor, your bond underwriting from what options are out there to pay for a long range plan. If I remember right, you work with Stiefel Financial. And 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 they have helped on a number of programs we have done in in cooperation with BLDD. So so someone from from Stiefel can come and then be Stiefel, but. Somebody from the public finance side can come in and say. You, you, you're looking at a long range facility plan where here are various options for how you can pay for it, money that may be available and how you can get your hands on it kind of thing. Because part of the long range plan is not only, you know, what do we want to do, but we got to figure out some realistic alternative for paying for it.
Board members, before Steve takes us through the document, is there, are there other questions on cost and process?
This is Ken, I I have some. Can you just give us some examples of communities you've done this for in, let's say, the last five years?
Yeah, so just last spring, Williamsville School District as well as Moreau Forside. You guys still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, sorry, my computer screen is just went blank. Williamsville School District, Moreau Forside, just last spring, we're both successful in passage using a very similar process.
Richland Community Unit School District One, we worked on together. Gen C O Jacksonville.
Valley School District over in Downs, Central fifty one over in Washington, they actually passed a two thirds. They needed to go beyond their bonding capacity. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty remarkable one there. I'm trying to think, those are over the past, I guess, three years.
Right.
Use the same model of putting together a committee to do the engagement work?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, the model with the facilitation team doing process. And the community engagement meetings, kind of doing the product or reaching consensus on the plan is pretty consistent. We kind of regard that as a best practice. Now, if you actually attended the meetings and what was presented and the path they walked. You know, the the path from A to B may look different in one district than another, but they all got there in one manner or another. And and that's how we, you know, let the facilitation team kind of customize this program and take take possession of it. So, so, you know, that's one reason why the 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 draft of the of the charge is relatively open ended. To give them, you know, the ability to, as I said earlier, to kind of take ownership of it and work with us. I I I regard, I use that word, I regard our role as bringing in best practices and doing community engagement. And then one of the roles that Damian plays is kind of putting, you know, pencil to paper and actually fleshing out, you know. Ideas that they have for the long range plan in terms of whether it works and what it will cost and how it might be able to be phased in. All that stuff gets pretty complicated. And then in most communities that we've worked in that facilitation team, people on that, they're kind of in for a penny, in for a pound. If it does go to referendum, a lot of times people on the committee will take one hat off and put another hat on and say, listen, we want to go out into the community and talk about this. In terms of the referendum now, I'm I'm saying that that's their decision, that's not the board's decision. And that's kind of outside of the scope of work we're talking about here. But but that often happens, for example, both in Moreau and in Williamsville. That was a characteristic of the work is that people on that facilitation team. Kind of took the next step on their own.
Can you, can you say, what is the composition of the committee going to be? How many people are on it and what kind of stakeholders are they?
So, do you want me to answer that or?
Yeah, yeah, Rod, go ahead.
Yeah, it it tends to have been growing over the years. We want more civilians than people that are getting a paycheck or serving on a board. So we usually end up anywhere from ten or fifteen people, citizens on the facilitation team. What we will do, and what we normally do at least is ask anybody in the district, really, whether they're on the board or in the administration. Secretaries that have been around for a long time, maybe people with the chamber, fire district board, park board, whoever. To kind of give us names of people that 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 would be good for this group. And, you know, the, we have kind of a worksheet that kind of gives characteristics, but the key thing for these people is that they, I I like using the phrase, play well with others. That they can be part of a collaborative group, they can challenge each other, discuss issues, disagree agreeably. But have productive meetings and and will help with that. What what happens when you get these names, a lot of times you'll see names that come up on almost everybody's list. That happened in Richland, for example, with a couple of the co chairs that were picked. And then the other thing that happens is, you know, we may get from all those names that come in. I'll just make an example up, eight people that are pretty active on the Chamber of Commerce. Well, if you pick a couple of them, that kind of, that kind of knocks the rest of them off the list because you don't want it to look like a chamber committee meeting. So we'll try to get as much diversity, both demographic and otherwise on that group as we can. If you have a large Latino population, we'd like to get representation from that. Parents, you know, former parents, you know, senior citizens, we'll try to get as much of a mix as we can. In addition to that, we'll want. Two board liaisons, and the only reason we don't have three is so you don't have to post it, although we normally do anyhow. So a couple of board liaisons, couple of people from the administration, we usually get a couple, one or two. Staff members, and so it gets up to about twenty, twenty two people. We will talk to that group at the initial meeting, Damian and I will kind of run that first meeting and us. And do an orientation, but we'll ask for them to to discuss leadership. We normally have three or four co chairs. And 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 then they will gradually kind of take. Charge of that group and 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 we will move from the front. Kind of more to pushing from the rear and helping and working with the co chairs and chairing the meetings. And and if you've set through this process, you'll see at a point in time where they they kind of take control of it and it becomes theirs and kind of an ownership what. And and that's what you kind of want to move it towards. So so that's a long winded answer about how to get a, get on there and what we normally do is kind of pick the twenty we want. Send a mail or email to them, have them come to a a breakfast meeting or a lunch meeting or an evening meeting. And and tell them what it's about, the first meeting is not for them to, you know, come saying that they're going to be a member. But to kind of give them an orientation and then say. We hope you join us as members of this this group. We rarely had anybody say no, the only people that end up saying no is if they just. You know, for example, somebody was going to travel a lot for work and they were just afraid of the time commitment. So so that's kind of the process. And then we'll work with district leadership after we get, you know, it could be a hundred names of people that are mentioned that would be good for this. We'll work on kind of balancing that and figuring out who we need to invite.
And how do you, so is their role to represent a portion of the constituents or is it simply to represent their own personal opinions?
Yeah, we don't tell them like if you're African American, you're representing all the African Americans, but but we, we know that they have that perspective, I guess. Same thing about a teacher, we know they have the perspective of a teacher and the teachers can bring. You know, things to the table about educational issues in the classroom that a lot of parents and certainly a lot of non parents don't know. You know, you know, heating and cooling things that they experience or kids that can't go to the bathroom during the day because the bathrooms are inadequate. You know, fresh air problems with the kids getting sleepy in the afternoon because there's not enough oxygen on the classrooms. Teachers know some of those things and we want all of that to be part of the discussion. So it's good to have some real diversity of opinion. In in that group.
And Ken, we usually see that just from from the diversity in the group. They have different connections in the community and here, you know, here are different angles. So just to echo what Rod said, they're not necessarily assigned, you know, their their group. But we we just get an understanding of that that cross section, people that are business owners or like Rod said, teachers. Gives that, gives that representation.
And how how are they actually selected, who makes the decision on who's on the committee and who's not?
So we, we up to. What we need to do is get a small, at least what have happened in the past. We've gotten a small group of six to eight together around a conference table and start putting names up on a dry whiteboard and try to look for that kind of balance that I'm looking at. It would be up to, you know, the leadership of the district who who's kind of at that vetting meeting for for picking those people. A lot of times it's pretty obvious, you know, you go down the list and a lot of names have been named twice and. And 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 the process of putting people on the group ends up taking others off and so you. You you kind of get to the, I I don't want to say it's obvious, but it it at some point in time, it's pretty obvious who you want to pick. Sometimes you notice there's some gaps. You, you know, someone might say, you know, we don't have anybody that's got. Preschool age kids, maybe we need to look at some of the, some of the preschool programs around and get someone like that. Or somebody might say, we don't have anybody from the Methodist church, I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of making this stuff up, but you may see gaps also. Where you want to do some, you know, exploration for leadership in a, in a certain group.
And you mentioned options. How did those options, I'm assuming you're talking about. Facilities development options, how do those options originate? Like who can suggest an option? And then you said they, there's a process of narrowing those down. Who is doing the actual narrowing down, the committee or the board of ed?
That will happen, I should let Damian answer this, but that will happen at the, at the community engagement meetings. We will let them brainstorm options. Damian's team will put those together and what they might look like in a coherent package, eventually what they're going to cost. We will work with the facilitating team on developing some kind of scoring rubric for each of those. And literally have people score them and rank them. Based on the objective data that BLDD brings to the table. One of the things that we can do in the spring, for example, is is create that 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 the priorities. I'll take Richland as an example, one of the things they did in the earliest meetings was prioritize outcomes, things that they wanted to accomplish on the plan. And then we use that as part of the scoring rubric to look at the options. But that, when I said that the community engagement meetings are about process, that's what I mean, they all do that. And and we can have four hundred people in the room and we'll create a process where they 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 rank order and score various options they look at. I mean, I don't, how many did they have in Moreau, they had at least eight, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, at least, yeah.
Seemed like a lot to me and and they eventually narrowed that down to to the, to the one that they preferred the most. And and then reconsidered that at one point in time because there was some last minute things that came up that they had to consider. So that that was a long winded response, but that's the kind of thing we work with the facilitating team on and how to do that and make it happen.
Max, did you have a comment?
Yeah, tonight during public comment, we had someone comment that they thought, you know, the fact that. The calendar for this ran a year, that seemed kind of long to them, do you guys want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, in essence. The spring months, right now, really what we're, we're continuing with that. Spring of twenty two is the next opportunity with realistic planning time to be able to get permission from the community. To to do a a large scale facility implementation. So working backwards from that. You know, we walk ourselves back to today. And that's where we've outlined kind of dividing that work that could potentially happen over a fall into the spring and the fall. Our feelings were that, A, being able to give it the depth of. Kind of exploration this spring, finding out and identifying some of the key needs. And directions of of any successful facility plan. Having the summer where we're not working with community groups, that's really our kind of. Development time and then being able to come in the fall and only be talking about solutions. Seemed like a really great fit for the complexity of what we have with facility needs in in Mohammed. So, well, it looks like it's a year long process, in reality, it's nine months of community work. And we're, you know, really taking ourselves from the ground all the way to a recommendation to the Board of Education. The direction of of facilities, so. Yeah, I think a lot of it's just kind of the circumstances of the of the current. Schedule as well.
Yeah, the problem is summer and the problem is the holidays, that makes it look like we have a lot more time than what we really have. If we started community engagement meetings in September, there's time to get them done by the end of the school year. Nobody thinks it's a particularly long plan. This is a similar timeline, except it takes the summer out and the, the one thing about the plan is you don't, you don't want to rush community engagement. Or people are going to say the board knew what they wanted to do before they asked us to come to meetings, this is all just show. It's not, it's not really to have to get our input. So so if you genuinely want to do engagement, you've got to let there be enough. I'll go back to Dan Burns again, he likes to call it soak time. And then he would say for you guys that live east of the of the Mississippi River, you use marinade ton.
And I, I think, Max, to Rod's point, I think that's a key piece here, is there, could be some very divergent ideas of how do we solve. You know, the junior high. Capacity, you know, that solution could go two very different ways, three, four different ways. Being able to not only study it thoroughly, but also present it to the community in a manner where they can provide feedback. And see that feedback again before being asked to decide if they like option one, two or three. Seems to be a a useful use of this kind of extended period, if you will. I think if it was pretty cut and dry as far as. You know, a couple of solutions that everybody in the community was pretty clear that. Makes sense, sure, it could, you know, very potentially be a shorter process, but with some of the the question marks that we have. You know, the questions of property, the questions of growing enrollment, which is not normal across the state of Illinois. It's kind of, we're kind of an outlier. These are all things that. You know, can can use this this time.
Other questions about process or cost?
So I think, I think you just touched on a a real problem we're going to face. The concern you just raised about. The board or some group of stakeholders having a plan already formed and just wanting to convince the community. I think we're going to have that problem no matter what way we go. That people are going to believe that's the case. Especially, and and this is what I'm curious about is how to deal with the the fact that. For the last four or five years, we've been talking about kind of a general plan. What the next step is and and we've been, I mean, even as recent as in the last twelve months, we've been going to. Public meetings and talking to parents and things and and saying that the next step is to build a junior high, the next step is to build a junior high. How do we deal with? That problem when we have kind of set ourselves up to say that that's what the next step is going to be? How do we convince people that we're really going to take an objective, fresh look at all of this?
Well, I I would say, Ken, I think first of all, we're, we need to be upfront at the beginning that that will, will need to be a solution we explore. Well, I would say, Ken, I think first of all, we're, we need to be upfront at the beginning that that will need to be a solution we explore. To pretend as if we're ignoring it isn't doing it justice and it's, you know, in a way would be making the whole process a question. Oh, they're ignoring it because they know it's the one they're going to end up with or whatever. Another key to this is that I think Colleen, when we're having our pre meetings on this, the idea that we're open to exploring and discussing all the options. New additions, all those things. And one of the things that we really feel strongly about is that we discuss them, we show them, we talk about the pros and cons. And you know, we we put them down in public where the community group are the ones that see why an option is or isn't viable. That's where we may not develop it to the point where we know where every classroom is at. But as we're looking at the scale of additions needed or new building or things like that, that's the important piece is that people see that in the community and they're the ones that that make that choice. If you know what? These are the reasons that solution really doesn't make sense. Also, we, what you'll see in these engagements and it's your feelings of, you know, anxiety to what's the solution going to be? How are people going to react is is very common. And what we always see is that no matter what the community group is, when everybody sees kind of the factual data of what enrollment is, they see the cost variation between them, they see how it can affect students. We always say that good people with good information can make good decisions. And that's always what ends up happening. And that doesn't mean that that's the plan that we thought was going to happen, always comes through at the end. But the plan that makes it through is the one that, looking back at the board's charge and looking back at planning principles, looking back at, you know, lifecycle improvements to the district. It's the one that for all those, it can check all the boxes and the community is the ones that that are going to make that that decision. I'm not going to be up there saying, you know what? I think the best plan is this. We will have studied it, you know, as as a community group.
Part of the process, part of the answer that's in the process, people will actually come to meetings and see that there is an agenda. And and so the proof is in the pudding, kind of. It is not uncommon in other communities for people to have in their back of the mind, the board's already got a solution it wants to to adopt. We mentioned Richland earlier, so I'll mention it again. In that community, a lot of the people that came to the first meeting thought they wanted to knock down the high school and build a new one. Well, that turned out not to be the option that was picked and they found out early on that that there were other things that were going to be considered. And then then they were kind of surprised when it didn't go that direction. Where B L D D is located in Decatur, everybody thought the agenda was building a single high school to replace the two existing high schools. That wasn't the solution that was picked. So so it is, it is open ended, but it's important, as Damian said, to be transparent. If you want something off the table, that needs to be in that charge. Because, you know, you are the board and and that's your responsibility to 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 make those decisions. That could be anything from not changing grade configuration. Some school districts have class size standards that they want, that they've adopted, that needs to be built into the plan. You know, we don't care what your, you know, what your option is, but these class sizes need to be maintained. This is board policy. So those are the kinds of things. If you don't want people kind of getting their hands on things, that that needs to be specified in the in in the charge. Those are just a couple of examples of that. We have worked for a bunch of districts that didn't want to change grade configuration. They didn't want to look at grade centers, you know, kind of go to K four and five, eight, whatever.
And how do we? How do we protect or I guess reassure voices who who want to participate but are afraid to do so publicly because of their concerns about blowback or retribution? Like for, just for instance, how do we protect one of our teachers who wants to put forth an idea that is maybe not necessarily supported by, well, fellow teachers or administration or the board? How do we, how do we reassure those folks?
So so the way that the work typically happens, this isn't a room of 400 individuals, you know, tasked with coming up with their ideas. Whether we do it virtually, whether we do it in person, which is would be great to be able to get to that point for for many reasons, but is the ability that they're working collaboratively. So, you know, let's say we've got that room of 400 people, that's 50 tables of eight. And they're working as a as a cohort. So no single individual is tasked then with being the one that's saying, this is my idea. It's the table's idea. So that allows somebody to be able to interject their ideas and thoughts into that that group's you know, kind of pot of ideas. And then nobody feels singled out because it's not called out as, you know, Mrs. Smith's idea, it's table 14. And they, that is actually reported out at the end of a meeting. You know, let's say they came up with three scenarios. There will be a two minute report out. They'll get to report out what their ideas were. So everybody hears what happened at the table. It can't be just flushed away. And then we take it back and and work on on developing from there. So we also can have the opportunity, we have, I have a question forums as well that are, you can put your contact information or you can leave it off. And those are alternative ways that people can ask questions about the process, if there's anything they don't understand. Or if they can essentially, you know, throw some ideas out that maybe they didn't feel comfortable talking about, even to their their small group table. There's a lot of methods. We want to hear as many voices as we can.
And we randomly assign people to tables. So so you know, if an idea is going to bubble to the top, it's got to bubble to the top from people that are randomly assigned to to a table rather than, well, I'll pick a specific example. In St. Charles, Illinois, there were there was a very, very small elementary school that was very, very old. And it wasn't, you know, and the parents from there were concerned that 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 building may not survive the plan. Well, had they all been able to come and sit together at a couple of tables, that could have created, you know, at least keeping some notions about that building more viable than what happened when they got randomly assigned to tables. And 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 kind of that that kind of sentiment had more trouble kind of bubbling to the top because they had to discuss at the table level that issue and then bring that forward as a priority. So it kind of eliminated, the process kind of gets rid of, I'm a statistician kind of outliers that way. Enforces consensus.
Do you expect that the these community meetings and the committee meetings and any of the committee work? Do you expect that that'll all be done in a public way that the public can see for themselves?
That would certainly be my recommendation. You know, the facilitating team meetings are 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 not public meetings, but they're certainly open to the public. In Geneseeo, even though they certainly weren't required to do it, we had two board liaisons. And all the board members attended, five of them sat in the cheap seats with, you know, people from the community that wanted to observe. It would be our recommendation to the facilitation team that everything be open to the public. That'd be a wide open, Damian used the word transparent, I'll use it again, you know, a transparent process. There's clearly nothing to hide. I mean, I don't know why anybody wouldn't want to do it.
And can we also, we pretty methodically present at each meeting, there's there's an introduction of some type of learning that happens for the for the group, whether it be about district finance, whether it be about you know, future focused learning environments, the district's facility needs, whatever that intro piece is. There's then a work portion and then a report out. At the following meeting, there's always a portion in that introduction where, you know, we're about to, you know, teach the group something or inform them of something where there's a a refresh of what happened in the previous meeting. So that's not only the work that was given or the kind of informational piece, you know, in a brief description, but also the results of that. So if it was a survey from the group, if it was a prioritization of needs, that's always percolating through to the next meeting. And then ultimately in that final presentation to the board, it's it's essentially a presentation, not just of that plan, but of the whole process of of how we got from, you know, October 5th to you know, the middle of November or whenever the date is that that it would come to the board. So yeah, that's a really, that's an important piece.
The the sometimes the media figures out that the facilitating team meetings are more exciting and maybe even at as exciting and sometimes more exciting than the community meetings. So they'll come to those meetings. And what we will ask the reporter do is kind of spoiler alert, don't say, you know, she was killed in the library with the rope and Biden by, you know, Mr. Green or I can't remember the characters. In in other words, we don't want them putting the whole presentation that's going to be Wednesday night in the paper on Monday. So people feel like they don't have to come. And the press is usually very cooperative about that. In terms of helping publicize and getting good attendance.
And we also recommend posting all of this to the district's website as we're going along. You know, there will be presentations happening. And we can create a page for that. We can create a link to it. So people can follow along and catch up. We've had districts that have recorded the presentations so that they can either be streamed online and people can watch. Or that people can catch up, again, catch up later on the feedback. Now that's the community engagement portions. The facilitation ones are more of an in person. Because really the key to those is the the ability to openly discuss pros and cons. So we're not usually broadcasting those, but of course, as Rod said, anyone's welcome to to listen in as as those meetings go on.
Damian, under that fee proposal, I'm just trying to understand. We have some language here that says contingent upon the passage and limited to the amount of $20,000 if the referendum were to fail. Further down it says if the effort results in a referendum not being placed on the ballot, you would be billing for actual time beyond the original agreed upon $20,000. So is there a distinction? End of this process, if we don't end up adding a referendum to the ballot, can you help me understand? I'm confused by this fee schedule.
Yeah, so typically with this scale of an effort and really kind of the the need that we have, see the board deciding to move forward with something with a referendum. I can, I can adjust that language if you guys are uncomfortable with it. Essentially it was saying, you know, if you decided in July that you're done, well, we we'd see what our time over $20,000 was and and sent you the bill for that. I see that being unlikely, but I'm happy to discuss or negotiate how we want that to be worded. You know, because ultimately our having skin in the game, you know, as a as a business, we we want you to be successful and we also want you to be successful with our assistance. And, you know, that can result in in future work potentially. But I'm happy to reward that portion of the agreement if if it'd make you more comfortable.
Okay. And then it kind of, you just, you just hit a little bit on how in the past have you addressed the question of a conflict of interest? It seems to me like the questions could be raised about B L D D leading the charge for new facilities, that then they would be responsible for the architecture of, it's almost like you're feeding your own process. So how do we eliminate the question of a conflict of interest with you leading the charge? And then when we get the end of it, to the end of this, do we go out or bid for these services? It sounds like we'll have a set of plans already drawn up. How do we address those questions of conflict of interest?
So two pieces to that. The second piece, actually, so coming out of this, there actually wouldn't be kind of drawings and specs pulled together yet. It'd be very high level kind of conceptual ideas of of where renovations go. If you look at the the law for a referenda, you know, let's say for instance, it was just hypothetically, build an addition at the high school for a junior high. That would have to be spelled out in that referendum. So that work, that'd be clear. But beyond that, as far as documentation, that wouldn't be included. As far as conflict of interest for the scope, that's really the key for the community involvement is that as Rod was saying, we'll be there assisting and providing, you know, our expertise to be able to draw, to estimate dollars, to look at the educational impacts. But ultimately, it'll be the community's selection of a plan that goes forward. As a community member, I would love to do our buildings in the district and I would hope to be able to do that. However, my my desire is to do a project as a responsible school architect do not extend to the point where I'm just trying to push the biggest project to get the biggest fee. And that, that's something that there's actually companies across the Midwest that that is actually the opposite. They actually try to do the biggest project regardless of what's needed by the district. They just say, oh, you need a hundred million dollars in construction. Well, they don't, but that's a hundred million, a hundred million dollar project. We like to go to the community and let the community decide for themselves what they feel is palatable and supportable by themselves. And then assist the district to implementation of that. So that's the, I guess, hopefully that answered in some ways the 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 question of that desire.
It's probably important to note that B L E D is our Architect of Record right now. And so most conceptual drawings we would do at this point, they would probably do anyway. Certainly, once we get beyond the concept stage, we've got to go hire an architect to actually view a project if we view a project. And and then we would interview architects like we have before. When we did this building, our Architect of Record did some concept type work, but we ended up choosing another company that designed the building. So it's, we've we've got history of being able to separate that. And and certainly we would be interested in what B L E D had to say if it became a project that needed to be designed.
So a little bit earlier, Rod said that if there were things that the board felt strongly about and wanted to keep and were their priorities, that that would be included in the charge so that the committee would understand sort of the parameters that the board set up. And so I'm wondering when we are going to have that meeting to have a discussion about what kind of parameters the board would like to have in terms of those specifics, like class sizes or changing grade levels or those kind of things that Rod just mentioned.
I think Rod is going to lead us to that discussion next.
Yeah, that was, I, you know, and that that sometimes is an element of the charge and sometimes not. I was just raising that. You know, as I said, there was one community that very strongly didn't want the community engagement program to look at 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 options that would change grade configuration. So that kind of narrowed the 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 range of things that they could look at. You may not have guidelines on class size and you may want the group to to deal with issues of class size as part of their deliberations. That happens a lot. So so that's kind of the next discussion I I think we ought to have. I I did want to go back and address the issue of of B L E D leading the charge and emphasize something Damian said, the people who will be leading the charge are the facilitation team and the co chairs of that. And anytime that we get questions about who's leading the charge, that needs to be the answer. And that answer needs to be more than just spin. That needs to be reality. They need to take ownership of this and feel like it's their program. And that that my role and and Damian's role is to help them do this process and offer some advices. I sell them best practices. But they own it and it's their credibility that 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 is behind it. And and that's what makes a program work really well is when it's perceived of being, and it really is the community's process, not my processes or not B L D Ds. That's my term for the night, by the way.
It seems to me that, and I said this It seems to me that, and I said this when we met before, that it would be very important how this committee is selected. And it seems to me that I would be most comfortable if the board was involved in the selection process.
Well, I, as I said, that, that has certainly been the case in every program we've ever worked on. You, you, you know, both in terms of getting the raw material together, those collection of names. And then, then, then kind of deciding kind of who's at the table to, to vet them and talk about them and, and, kind of decide who gets invited to that, you know, the initial meeting to, to do the orientation. But my, my experience is when you sit down at that table, it, it, I, I don't always say that it's obvious who should be, but a lot of names really pop out as people that ought to be, be part of that. So we've not had trouble picking that the facilitating team. The only trouble we've ever had is when we kind of didn't collect enough names from the get go. And then we had to do some brainstorming and recruiting and, you know, cause, cause there wasn't really enough to pick from in a sense. Enough diversity, for example. So it needs to be kind of a collaborative process to state the obvious, I guess. But, but again, remember they're about, I keep trying, they're about process, not product. So, so what they're making decisions about is how to have the best kind of engagement meeting we can in terms of getting people to the meetings. Making sure that every time somebody comes to the meeting, they learn something and they decide something and they have a good experience. Uh, even to the point of having decent cookies and drinks. You, you know, we, we want people to come back and they won't come back if they don't have a good experience at the engagement meetings. That's what this group is about. They're not making decisions about whether to build a building in the northwest corner of the district or the southwest corner of the district. That's the engagement meetings that do that. That's the you all come meetings.
So one thing that I was curious about is it seems like we're presupposing that an end goal here is a referendum. Can you explain why that is? Why, why is that the target?
That wasn't my assumption. I stated that the calendar was put together to allow that. That doesn't necessarily mean that's where this is going. And, you know, we have worked in other communities where they have had a calendar like this and not gone on the ballot. Uh, or, uh, pick a later election date, for example, the November 2022 ballot. You know, we'll be doing, at least we'll be recommending doing a little bit of survey work down the line and, and, and so we'll have to make some decisions, you know, both in the engagement process and with the board. Kind of what next steps ought to look like based on the input that we get. Uh, you know, we may bring the community together and they may look at it and say, no one hello on referendum, you know? Don't even think about it. And, and if that's, you know, if that's what we hear across the board in a loud voice, uh, we're, we're going to have to decide what to do with that recommend, you know, with that advice that we get.
The reason it's been mentioned to this point, it's kind of like, uh, school construction projects. It's just a schedule on which a district has to work. So that's one of the, you know, first kind of, um, flag in the stand type of milestones, if you will. But yeah, it's, it's in no way presuppose, um, just the process would allow that to happen. The way that's outlined.
Rod, you want to take us into the charge and see if there's anything there we want to add or edit? And I guess I'd just say right out of the gate, I, I think as much as possible, I'd like to leave this as wide open as we can because I, I, I think it's important for the group to understand that we don't have anything presupposed this year and, and they can go whatever direction they, they need to go. Now, that being said, we do have some class sized ranges that we try to stay in. I don't know if we expect that or not. I guess the group can talk about that. And, you know, I think we are kind of expecting that this project needs to, among other things, address space at the junior high level. And, and certainly that means, I think we're expecting a solution to deal with that issues in some way, shape, manner or form at some point. But I don't know that we need to say that in the charge. So, Rod, help us.
Well, I, from, from what little I know, I, it's hard for me to imagine that not coming out of the fact finding. So I, I, you know, whether or not you explicitly mentioned it or not is, is, uh, is kind of up to the board. You know, with Moreau Forsyth, I, you know, the charge specifically mentioned uh, junior high or middle school education because, cause well, the, you know, the school that they were replacing was a mess. My guess is had the charge not specifically mentioned that, it would have come out of the process anyhow. It was, it was kind of the obvious need, you know? So, you know, the, the advantage of keeping it open in a sense is that, you know, it's all about the group doing exploration. I, you know, probably one of the first meetings we'll have is Damian will do a kind of a state of the district or state, you know, an overall facilities report. Uh, I don't know how they're going about doing that, but normally they have some kind of grading format where they talk about, you know, the condition of the buildings as they measure up against some kind of indices. So, so a, a lot of times, you know, the things that you already know about that building will come out of that report in terms of, you know, the priority setting for the group. So, my thinking is whether it's there or not, they're going to get there.
Yeah, we've got functionality issues there and we've got space issues there, but I don't know that we even need to comment on it in in the charge, because I think that's all going to come out.
Right.
My thought.
I think we need to find a term, like Russ mentioned before, you know, we're using the term long range and long term, but we're not defining what we mean by that. Long-term and long-range could mean five years to one person, it could mean 20 years to another person, but I think we, we need to have, start with some, a, a long range number that we're looking at. Uh, that we might see, um, potential needs in that defined period. And then within that, what needs to happen within like the next five years? Looking at, keeping the long range in mind. But I think we need some definition to that.
Right.
Typically a baseline for, for long-range facility planning is either 20 or 30 years. 20 is the lowest. That's really when you can refinance, you know, that's kind of the bonding schedule of school districts. When we do our CLEO analysis, we, we can do 20 or 30, and that gives you that ability to really look at bigger picture than just how do we solve our problems today? How do we kind of pre-plan and, and consider some of those future efforts and how those work into it? So. Also through that.
And use it, instead of using the word long range, why don't we say 20 to 30 year?
The other thing I should mention is that, you know, this is not static. There's going to be two board liaisons to the facilitation team. Any board member can attend. And, and this process works best when there's a lot of internal communication where we're all talking to one another and, and, and if issues are bubbling up to address them and not waiting until the report to the Board of Education, you, you know, for those kinds of things to surface. Uh, so, so it needs to be a very collaborative process. You know, we, we worked in a district a long time ago where it was pretty clear that we were going to have to explicitly address early childhood education. This is quite a while ago. It looked like the process wasn't going there in the first phase of work. The, the, the board strongly wanted early childhood education addressed in the first phase of their facility improvement. So we had to figure out how to address that issue and we did. So, you know, we can talk along the way is kind of my point that I want to make. This is, this is our, it's not, this is not a B line from A to B. It's a zigzag line that we're going to walk.
So Rod, if we're talking about a 20 to 30 year plan, is it typical then for when the, when it comes back to us? For it to kind of be phased into recommended phases? Or do we want us to override?
So that ultimately, that really depends on the solution. Uh, solution, the financial ability of the district, those are all factors that, that affect that. Um, we've had with that.
So we should let that kind of naturally happen depending on what the solutions are?
Yeah, yeah, because there, there could be, I had this happen actually before where a master plan came to be, and then really the selection was about what the first phase was going to be. It was very clear what the overall master plan was, but it was, do we do elementary schools or middle school first? And then that's what really became that question because they couldn't do both um, at once. And then the priority, which going into the efforts, we really thought was elementary schools became clear that it was at the middle school level. So, yeah, the phased piece is really, it'll be contingent on the plans and the scope and the scale. One comment to the kind of enrollment or the class sizes. My recommendation would be, you know, if anything that we just, um, would state kind of district standards for class, you know, more reference something that's already been mandated by the district and perhaps by the board as opposed to particular numbers. Because we will be, we will be utilizing the knowledge of, you know, district admin staff to help us to understand some of those pieces. So that, that's just my two cents on, on that piece. But yeah, I think the, you know, the idea of the junior high being an inclusion of this conversation. We think that's, you know, we all think that's an important piece. That makes some sense.
I would hesitate to put any limits on what people can come back. I think we have a general space issue. We just had the biggest class ever enter our kindergarten class. Those classes, uh, every year move up. So I don't think that we can limit our discussions to a single building. I would have a real hesitation as to putting anything out there that might hinder the creativity that might come from this group about how to solve space issues with, with any building. So I, I think it's important that we say for the next 20 to 30 years, we need a solution that will enable us to grow as a town and facilitate the education of children throughout the process. Understanding that we're in a community where each starting class seems to be bigger than the last. So our need for space is going to grow. And we don't have a single building that isn't going to be impact. I mean, we have, every single building will be impacted by that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, Megan, I've got Richland on my, on mine now, and they had a 20 or 20-year plan. The, the high school became the focus of that because it was the first phase. Uh, but, but if you look at what was reported to the board, there, there were both middle and elementary school components to the plan. They just had to start with the high school. And, and they didn't have enough money to do everything. So they had to get, they had to pay down some debt from the high school before they took the next steps to implement a long-range plan, but, but that was a piece of it. So they, they didn't just deal with the high school and I probably implied that earlier.
I guess what I'd like to suggest is that, I'm sorry, Dean.
Go ahead, Megan.
I would like to suggest that the first part of this process, if we move forward with it, is that the board has the opportunity to have a meeting with nothing on the agenda except diving into the charge from the board and having a deep dive on what this actually looks like. So that when we hand it over to a committee, there's a real clear understanding. I, I think that deserves more discussion than we probably have time for tonight. And I'd like to see that as the first step if we decide to move forward. Where we have a meeting where that's the only agenda item we have and have the ability to take a deep dive and really have some clarity that comes out, uh, with the document that has enough specifics uh, that the, the community or the facilitation team can move forward without restricting them in terms of predictive, predictive thoughts about what will happen.
We probably need some data about that before we can do that.
Actually, that's something Colleen brings up. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I, I thought that's what we had pre-meeting. That's why I thought this meeting was for tonight. That's what I thought the agenda item was for, but maybe I misunderstood. That's, that's what we were told when we had our time with Damian. That that was going to throw out, throw out all the questions. And then they were going to come to us and address us. And that's what I thought we were doing right now, having an open discussion about it. So I'm, I'm a little lost by that, but.
Well, maybe I can give an example that would help. To, to Colleen's point, I feel like one of the things that's missing from the charge, um, and maybe you're considering it as part of item number one. For those, uh, that don't have it in front of you. Item one talks about understanding the long-term challenges of the, the school district. I feel like in order to understand those challenges, we need to really do a good job of gathering a, a shared, agreed upon collection of data. So that we don't have a whole bunch of people coming together with their own anecdotal, anecdotal kind of assessment for what the school district needs. But actual data about, you know, what our class sizes have been and what our community growth has been and what the projection for community growth is. And I, I think, you know, depending on which stakeholder you get in, involved in the community or, sorry, involved in the committee or coming to one of these meetings. We have to do, before we can even get this discussion going, we have to do a good job of informing those people and making sure that they understand, um, what the state of the district is. Because I'll tell you, even as a board member, it's a real struggle to get the data. I need to understand what the state of the district is. Got to be difficult for a layperson.
That, that's what I meant at that first meeting, which is typically providing that information at the community engagement session. And the heavy lifting for that falls on Damian's shoulder. That's, that's literally building by building, how old it is, what the condition is, uh, what the capacity is and how many students are in it now, what the capacity needs to be from future growth. Putting all that data together in a, uh, kind of the state of the district's building presentation, that would kind of be the first informational presentation that would, that would be held. Uh, now I can't sit here today and tell you that's exactly what the facilitating team is going to want to do, but that, as you stated, that, that, that kind of agreed upon facts and figures has got to be a good starting point. So, so, you know, we all can have our own opinions about where it needs to go. We shouldn't have our own opinions about what the facts are uh, in terms of the current building conditions. And
We're going to do as part of the process, correct? That's not part of the charge.
Well, i- 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 if you want the first meeting to be about that, it could be in the charge, but I, I, I guess what I'm saying, I can't imagine that, that the group not moving in that direction. It just seems like kind of a obvious step to me and, and, and we'll sit down with the facilitating team and we'll tell them, listen, we, we need that meeting next February. Let's, let's talk a little bit about what we can do. What has often happened in districts is that they have a, a factual presentation about current conditions of the buildings and they say, oh yeah, we got to do that. And so you're off and running and then Damian's job is put that together. And at some point he will rehearse it in front of the facilitating team. And they'll tell him what they liked and they'll tell him what he didn't like and tell him what he needs to do better. Uh, you know, before it's ready for prime time, he'll maybe rehearse that a couple of different times. So, but, but that, that was a long-winded response to saying, you're exactly right about that needs to be early on in the process. And, and of course, all that data is made available to the board too.
And so I think to Megan's point though, I think it's an appropriate part of the charge from the board to say what it is we want to have in that report. What facts and data we feel like the community and the committee and the board are going to need in order to do this work.
Yeah, I, that can be fleshed out. Yeah, I, that can be fleshed out in there. I, I certainly don't see downside in doing that.
What are some examples of those, Ken? We'll just take some notes and add, see.
Time out. So we're not gonna. I don't think the entire opening presentation needs to be fleshed out and drafted in the charge. I think we need to say that we expect to provide the committee with an understanding of the long-term challenges. A- a- and everything that says in item one, I don't think we flush all that out. Well, the second page, second bullet already has in there that is up to the committee to obtain all this data on the schools.
I, I can't see any problem with the board hearing about the state of the district as they make a charge. When the point of this charge really is to inform the board on how the community feels. So if the goal here is for the board to have a good understanding of how the community feels when they make a decision, then it seems like it would be appropriate for the board to understand where we are right now. So that we could better ask the community the questions that we actually want the community to answer. Because in the end, we're the ones that need to have our questions answered, not this committee, right? Not even BLDD. It's the board that will need to have their questions answered. So if we would hear, what is the state of the district? I mean, this is on a plan to happen next month, right? If the board weren't here first, we could better articulate our charge.
I feel like we're flipping this on its head here. I think, um, yeah, we have questions need to be answered, but the community is the one that, I mean, they're the taxpayers. They're the ones that have questions that need to be answered. I think that's what this process is about, is that, is gathering these facts, gaining an understanding of what the needs and finances are of the district and, and then gathering that information. Um, and from that, then coming up with, you know, a plan. I don't, I don't think that we need to have several meetings to to gather this information. I think that's what, that's what Damian's here for too, is that working with Heather uh, and Lindsay and, and gathering that information so that the, the committee can come together and, and gain an understanding and then move forward with the process. Uh, I feel like.
I feel like we've got everything flushed out, then it plays right into that line of thinking where, well, the board already knows what they wanna do because they've already had this figured out.
Right. I'd rather keep it open-ended and let them gain a picture of what they think is happening. And then come up with some solutions for that.
Which supports what they, what Ken was talking about earlier, how we don't want to come in like we have a pre-conceived plan. If we do it where we're gonna flush everything out the way we want, then we do have a pre-conceived plan and we're driving the boat rather than letting the community drive the boat.
That's right.
I was talking about something like, for example, we charged the committee with finding a way to survey a minimum of 80% of our staff to get their feelings and understanding of how they, you know, current facilities address their needs, what their future wants would be, what their current needs are that are addressed. And ask the committee to not stop until they get 80% response rate on that. So that we can ensure that we actually understand what it is that the staff feels to inform the committee. We don't give some, and we'd like you to reach out to the community and get 50% response rate. Uh, and continue to, to survey until you figure out how to get that much response to data. If we only get a 10% response rate, then we fall into the uh, trap of assuming that 10% of people who happen to be vocal about what they want represents what the entire community wants. If we don't have those metrics laid out, uh, I think we run the risk of, of missing voices. That's what I was talking about.
Rod, do you drop that?
There, there's been no intent to, to, to miss voices and we have often done surveys of staff on facility issues to incorporate what you're talking about. Uh, the 80% response rate is pretty high. I hope we get that high, particularly as busy as they are right now, but we'll certainly try to get that. And in addition to doing surveys like that, we can, we can, we can do uh, focus groups with them and one-on-one interviewing. We need to get input from as many different places that we can. And, and you know, for example, Paxton, those staff surveys were presented at the community engagement meetings and that became part of the data and information they used to make their recommendations about a long-range facility plan. Those are all the issues we love to bring up at the facilitating team. You know, in terms of ideas for getting input. Uh, and, and that one in particular, if the board feels strongly enough about doing some kind of staff survey, it can certainly be on the charge or it can be a more making sure and determining how staff feels about facility issues. In addition to what you're talking about, we hope we have staff at every table at the engagement meeting. Some of the most interesting discussions are when staff members, a couple of parents, I'm sorry, a couple of teachers are at a table with six community members talking about some of the everyday challenges that they have. That kind of back and forth is part of them. And while, while we'll use the word magic of what happens at these meetings. You, you, you know, in a, in a sense, not to, you know, to not overcomplicate, because this is what the charge is about is the board creating a community engagement program to develop a long-range facility improvement plan for the district and reporting back. In a sense, it's no different than the, than the district having a facility subcommittee that's got a couple of board members on it and a few administrators and maybe five or six other people in doing that work. The difference is this uses a community engagement model that gets lots and lots and lots of people involved. Uh, there's certainly no effort at all to exclude ways to get input. Now, I think staff survey is an outstanding way to do that. We literally in Paxton had staff uh, e- e- estimate how much of the time during the day they spent in one-on-one instruction, small group instruction and whole class instruction and profile that by grade level. And the community was fascinated by that. Uh, so we can work a lot of that in that, but i- i- I guess the point I wanna make is, you know, what a community engagement part is about, it's a board creating this process then it happening with a lot of two-way communication that go back and forth and, and bringing ideas like that to the table. Again, there's board members that are on the facilitating team.
I guess I, I thought we were supposed, I thought we were supposed to be specifying what this charge was. I thought that was the, the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, I guess I'm not sure. If that idea is not what you want, I'm confused about what it is that we're trying to do right now.
Are we gonna look for the common interest for the people in the community of our facilities going forward and how they envision that looking instructionally, recreationally? And gathering this diverse group of people to talk about it?
I, I think there's a simple, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just think the first bullet actually fairly captures this. It's a long sentence, but it basically says we're to understand these long-term challenges and our own facilities and the spaces for curriculum and instruction. So I, I think it would be a mistake to, to put hard boundaries on how we need to get that understanding with, with, say, an 80% or a, of whatever. Because if we don't get 80%, we may wanna go back and get the focus groups. So there's a number of ways to address it, but the charge doesn't need, I don't think, to speak about the specifics as much as the overall duty.
I think the beauty of something like this is that you get many different people who are intelligent and um, have different thoughts and ideas that we may have as a board because we look at things a little bit differently. They look at it from a community perspective. And they may even think about things that we're not and how to gather that information and, and even some uh, details that might be more important that we're not even considering. So that's what I see. This is just kind of a, a big, you know, we're trying to, to gather uh, you know, a lot of ideas from various people and various segments of our community. Um, more so than just from the board. And I just would hate to pigeonhole them into saying, well, we have to do this or this. Other than yes, we need what is said in that first bullet point. Yeah, I just, I, I don't wanna narrow it to focus so much that they can't adequately assess needs and challenges and solutions.
You know, it's been my experience that it's hard to wordsmith things in a large group and I don't know if this makes sense or not, but it has certainly worked in the past. If, if, if board members have edits that they would like to see to this document, I would be more than happy to look at those edits, make revisions, mark them. If there's differences of opinion, you know, show where, you know, there needs to be something resolved and, and produce yet another draft of this, because now I'm not sure how much of that there is, how many changes we need to think about. I think it's hard to do that in a large group, particularly when we're all not in the same room. Uh, I, I don't know if that's a, 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 a direction that would be helpful or not. Uh.
And I, to answer.
Is, is pretty sufficient right now. Ken, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, just Damian, I was just gonna add real quick and, and answer to Megan's question earlier. The, the goal with the charge, kind of with her example of the teacher input would be that we specifically add faculty input to one of these line items as, as a area, as opposed to defining the process of how that happens. You know, if we won't add language that um, you have obtained up to the enrollment projections, maybe there's a line item about ensure uh, faculty's input is considered. You know, that still gives the importance of faculty input, uh, but doesn't lock group into how they're supposed to go about it. So to Jeremy's point, it gives them that ability to be creative and how they gather it. But they've been tasked with that as, as the input point.
Yeah, I think you could add to, to line to gather community and faculty input. You could even put student info in that. I mean, students are more creative than all of us usually, so you might find that some of the, you and our high school students have been through various have some pretty good thoughts.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea, Jeremy.
So I would say, um, Rod, redraft the second point.
Okay.
Community input, but input from all the different stakeholders.
Okay.
I, I would say we define long ranges 20 to 30 years, just so everyone is kind of thinking in the mindset that we're thinking.
Okay.
I'm good if, if Rod, if you want to take. I mean, I'm pretty good with the charge as it is. I don't wanna be limiting to the community and the community. But if folks wanna send additional suggestions to Rod that you can look at, I'm not sure, probably not. That might be a good way of handling.
I agree.
Okay, we can do that.
We email or somebody send us Rod's email.
And then Rod, you could have an updated version back to us when you think.
No, if, yeah, definitely.
Do we, we can, when, when can we expect the feedback? Did you guys say?
We can, we can get feedback to you by the end of the week, maybe?
That'd be great. I'll do it over the weekend. A- and if there's clearly some options, I, I'll, I'll do my best to explain what they are and maybe the pluses and minuses of both as I see it. Um, not, not that I'm smarter than anybody, but you know, I've been through it a few times.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Good. So we'll, we'll get thoughts to you by Friday. You can kick a new draft back to us or options for a draft early next week. That'd be great.
I'll hang back by Monday.
Anything else for Rod or Damian? Or on community engagement at this point? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and then we'll go to item seven.
See you later, Mr. Wright.
Oh, I'm here. Is it this, for us now?
Yep, well, they're still there, but they're done with us, so.
Oh, okay. Are you taking off?
You come back. We were talking about back to school plans. I'm gonna listen in. Taxpayer now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You guys are broadcasting.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Bye, Rod.
Are we all back? Colleen, are you there? Cause I can't see anybody. I don't hear or see Colleen. Megan, are you there? Ken?
Yeah, I'm here.
I'm here.
Good. There's Colleen. Or, or, yeah. Colleen, can you hear me?
Yep.
Megan, do you hear me?
Back.
All right. Perfect. All right. Item seven, update on 13 acres. Dr. Hall.
Oh, you're not trying? So we've, um, been engaging and, and had talked a little bit with the village about, obviously we have this, um, item on the agenda on October 19th for the sale of 13 acres. The, um, the contract for sale, the, um, intergovernmental agreement was passed back on, um, September 21st. And, um, one of the, one of the reasons for, or, you know, one of the outcomes of, um, not selling it in conversation with the village is that there is some pretty significant, um, drainage work that the district would be responsible for. So I think that, just wanted to make the board aware of that and take that into consideration, um, in terms of, um, what the decision is on October 19th. Because we will, um, if we continue to own that, we're going to be responsible for, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, um, I do have an email that I got late this afternoon from the village that I will forward to the board that kind of summarizes that, but I don't know if you want to add anything, Max, but, um, just to be aware that that's, that's, um, out there and it's going to be an expectation that we're responsible for that if we, if we keep that piece of property.
Um, I guess also we, we did verify, um, although the IGA did pass with four votes, to actually transfer the property in October, we would need at least five votes to do that. So we did verify that. So that will be a five vote required to sell it. And, um, yeah, the village has got to, back to us with what drainage is going to be required. And, um, Lindsay will forward that email then tonight or tomorrow to us, so we have.
That property has always had water problems. Is anything worse than what it was even 10 or 20 years ago? Has it just gone downhill?
I understand that in the last year or so, some neighbors have had issues in their crawl spaces or basements.
So. So what's the timeline that they say for that if we kept it, we'd have to have, take care of these drainage issues?
Um, I think over the next couple of years.
So if we do have a maintenance agreement that would remain in effect and, but I, I don't feel that it's the, if, if we continue to own that, at some point the village is not going to want to continue to maintain it if we're the, we're the owners. So there's maintenance, then there's more, I guess, capital improvements that, I, I don't know that I know the timeline for that, but it's, it's something that is out there. And if, as the owners, we would be expected to remedy that.
Steve, did they mention a timetable on the drainage?
No, just in the near distant future.
Yeah.
You know, if we didn't sell property, we would run into, you know, pretty.
Right.
These old ones.
Right. And right now we share maintenance on that. If, if, if they don't buy that, that they, they've made it clear they're going to move on, they're going to build a park elsewhere. They'll be out of there in three to five years and then we would be solely responsible for maintenance. Okay, we'll get that.
Remind me what our proportion of usage is at that location? Zero, it's not a hundred percent, 10 percent?
We use it, not a lot, mostly for the big ball diamond, the JV ball diamond and even the freshman ball diamond.
And the cross country meet, oh, this year. First year, the cross country meets have been there, but that's, that's not the normal place.
But even that.
We don't have much use of.
Even with the big JV ball diamond, they play as many as they can at the high school. So it's only when, it's only when the high school varsity team is playing at home and we have a JV or freshman game do we use that field.
High school soccer practice is there as well.
Yeah, there is high school soccer practice there. Um, and there is, you know, right now, cross countries there. I know youth football uses it, but that's not our program. So, yeah. Bud, give.
I've got a comment. If the, if the school district doesn't really see any future use in that property that's going to cost you, I would try to do an exchange with the village.
On 29th.
And try to, try to have them buy some property that's adjacent to this campus or somewhere else that you might be able to utilize in the future.
All right.
And I'd recommend a three to one exchange.
And keep up. Anything else on 13 acres tonight? Just a quick update, so.
So if it's on the agenda next month.
Be on our side of it when you get the email.
So if it's on, pardon me, if it's on the agenda next month and we have a comment, we can say that too, right?
Right.
Okay.
So just one last clarification, the sale has the continued sharing agreement with us both. So everything that was just listed, soccer, baseball, a few other things, still continue.
Yes.
We still get rented.
Yes.
We just won't own it and have that liability.
Yes.
Right. And they would develop the property and, you know.
Yeah.
They, they're, they're on record as saying they would probably spend somewhere around a million dollars to develop that property over the next five to seven years or so. They don't have it all mapped out yet, but that's their intent.
Well, it makes sense that they would, would and could and should do that when our focus is on another geography.
Okay, item eight, COVID-19 update. Dr. Hall.
Well, I, the only update I have is that we've, um, sent out a survey to our parents asking, um, and their desire, or if they have a desire to switch from, um, either remote to in person or in person to remote for second semester. And, um, we are hopeful to obtain, um, we need to get answers back on that by, by Friday. So upon knowing the numbers of students in our buildings, then we can, um, move ahead with the planning process to go, um, four days a week, second semester. Happy to answer. Any other questions?
I think there's a, a real issue for parents trying to answer that survey when, when they don't know exactly what school is going to be like from a parent's perspective. Um, even though we're, we say we're going to go back four days. You know, if it continues a similar model or teachers are, are divided in their attention between remote and in-person learning, um, I think you might have more parents choose remote because the in-person doesn't really provide the instruction that they feel like is productive for their students. Um, so I, I, I do feel like there's a problem with parents trying to answer that in the current form. And maybe we as a board need to rectify that and, and, and say, we need to be five days in person. And then we have teachers teaching class in person and we have teachers responsible for remote. So it, it doesn't create a division of work. And it is a little more clear for parents in trying to make a decision. So that's, that would be my solution is that we, we continue down that division of labor. It's just not going to be workable. And I just don't think people are going to be happy. And it's not going to have the service to our students that we need.
I think, uh, I think Jeremy is very right about, uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback from people about the frustration and concern about responding to that survey. Um, but, uh, one question I have is, is that survey being used as a commitment, um, for the parents? So if they answer a certain way, they're committing to have their child going or doing virtual? Or is it just an assessment for you, Dr. Hall, to get a sense for what the split is going to be like in January as things stand now?
Well, the survey is not for me personally. The survey is for planning purposes. So that when we get our second semester reopening group back together, um, in a week, actually two weeks from today, um, that we have a good estimate, a solid estimate of the number of students that are in our building. This allows us to plan for literally the placement of desks, of tables, of chairs, um, for classrooms, for, um, lunch periods, for other times that our kids are, are in school. Throughout the, the process this fall, um, going, well, going back to the beginning of August, we've worked with our families to accommodate, um, their costs. And so, um, you know, we've, we've said that if there are circumstances that come up that you can switch and you can change, and that's happened. And, um, you know, frankly, on, on our end, sometimes that creates some imbalances in classes, especially in the K-5 level. Um, but we have worked closely with our families. So it's to say that, I mean, yes, we'd like people to commit to that, but we understand that we live right now in a very fluid, dynamic and, and ever-changing environment. And so we've, we've afforded some flexibility. Um, it is, you know, on the classroom end, um, it's, it's challenging to have kids going in and out of classes or at the case of the K-5 level, actually switching teachers. But, um, we've done our best to accommodate those. But it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg kind of situation in terms of, we, we need the numbers to plan. But then I, I'm hearing and I, I appreciate greatly that families need to know the plan in order to tell us what, what to do. I, I hear loud and clear, um, trust me, I, I get it. I'm listening. I'm reading emails. That there's a desire to have fully remote sections at the sixth through 12th grade level. That might be possible, but we also need to know the numbers of students who would be interested in doing that in order to plan for that. Um, we can't just, it's, it's just a lot more complicated than what people think. And I, I'm not making excuses. That is our reality in planning, uh, to, to do that. Uh, definitely there are challenges with, um, with the current situation. There's no doubt about that. Um, I've, but I do talk with teachers for whom it's going very well. And I know that we have teachers and families that are frustrated by it. At the high school level, we can't make a remote section for every class. We have a lot of classes that are singleton classes. And so if kids, if kids who are remote want to take, for an example, an, an advanced placement course and it's only offered once per day, uh, we have to teach that synchronously in order for that to work. Um, the high school is made up of a number of, um, you know, required classes, but then also electives where there, those are not offered throughout, you know, there's not five or six offerings or, or 12 offerings throughout the day where we can just take one section and make it remote. So it, it actually would be very, would be limiting in some ways to just create fully remote sections of certain classes or not offering fully remote sections of some classes. So in doing it the way that we're doing it, we're, we're actually trying to keep the opportunities open for everybody to partake of, of the, the opportunities that we offer. Um, I've heard a lot of suggestions about, um, outsourcing remote. And, um, we can bring back the prices on that. It's going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, I've talked with other places where that's not going well. And I think one thing we have to consider is when, when this does end, and it will someday, that if we outsource remote education and those students come back, um, into our schools, are, are, are they going to be where they need to be in order to proceed ahead with our curriculum and our level of, of teaching? So those are just, those are questions that are out there. Our teachers in the summertime felt strongly about not, that they did not want to outsource that. And frankly, it would be financially a, a, a big undertaking that would result in us having to make some significant adjustments in other parts of, of our budget. Um, so. So that's, that's what I, I know now and, um, it's, I. There's, there's no ideal situation here. I understand that, um, there's just going to be a lot of unhappy people. I, I don't know how, I, I wish that weren't the case. We have such a wide range of viewpoints on how we should be doing school. I mean, it's, it's massive. The, the opinions and the feelings and the perspectives are, are, and that's only, I get it. That's only who we're hearing from or talking to. And, you know, so that's, that's what I would offer and, um, we just have, we have a lot of work to do in order to get to this spot for second semester. And I, I understand, not everybody understands all the work that has to be done. It would be very difficult to turn that around in the next couple of weeks, and I said that two weeks ago.
Question. Definition. When we say remote, I know there would be asynchronous, but there would also possibly be synchronous. So I'm curious whether it's possible to identify those high school classes where there is only one section taught, where they could actually be in a room where it could be synchronous, live video with somebody at the other end, whereas other classrooms may be remote asynchronous. I don't know whether it's all synchronous now. Okay.
Yes.
So remote is equivalent to synchronous learning.
At the high school.
At the junior high and high school.
At the junior high and high school.
So I'm not sure, but it's all like that, right?
It's not that, on Mondays, it's not that way.
But I mean, I, I feel as though one of the issues that I've heard is that some teachers have chosen an asynchronous model, which is of course a legitimate teaching pedagogy, in order to teach, but the lack of communication is making it a little bit more difficult for people to understand what's happening there. But, um, I actually have a question, but before I ask my question, I, I would just like to say that I really feel as though the ad hominem attacks from our community are starting to step over the line. And, um, personally attacking people with facts that quite frankly aren't even correct is not helping our situation. There's a lot of people with a lot of different points of view and we need to address it by coming together and having conversations. And that, um, personally attacking people with things that even are lies isn't really helpful. That being said, we have heard from a lot of people who are struggling, um, now, and I'm wondering if you could tell us what the plans are for the second quarter, um, if you're making any changes in how things are going to sort of address some of the issues that we've heard.
Well, first of all, Colleen, I appreciate your comments about, um, some of the things that happened, um, and that were said crossing the line. That's happened a couple of times, um, in the last couple of months, and, um, I appreciate you calling that out tonight. It's happened before as well, and, um, I don't personally see a need for it. And hopefully we can step away from that and, um, move on to more positive things with the understanding that, um, there's, there, there's nothing easy or simple about the decisions that, um, that are being made. So, um, so there's, you know, there's, that's a great question about, you know, moving ahead with how can we fix some of the issues that are going on with remote learning. And, um, I think one thing that is helpful is if parents can directly, um, communicate with the teacher. And I, you know, I don't want to oversimplify the process, but I've gotten emails about situations and I am not the person that can help with issues that are going on in the classroom. And so again, I don't want to oversimplify, um, the, the solution to the problem. But just some really open, healthy communication between parent and teacher would, would really go a long way in some circumstances. I'm not saying that's going to solve all of the problems. If that is not, uh, helpful, then the next step is to communicate with the assistant principal or the principal about, um, specific issues. Globally, you know, in a, in a bigger picture, we continue to offer professional development. That is something that we are deeply committed to. That is taking place on, on Mondays. And that's also, um, uh, to a certain extent, taking place in the mornings with the late start that we have with the junior high and, and high school. I know that there have been some specific instances where, um, have been pointed out. And I think that there have been improvements that are made. But it's no doubt that, that this is, uh, a, a challenging model to teach with. And keeping in mind that our teachers have never done it and that we're eight weeks into it. I think that there absolutely are areas where improvements can be made. But I also know that there are areas where things have gotten a lot better. I don't have specifics in terms of like, you know, the specific actions that are being taken. Cause I, I don't, I'm, our principals could probably speak better to that. But I think that sometimes, um, just the communication with the teachers is vitally important. And we know that we do have families that have, um, issues with, with internet. And I'm, I'm obviously, I, I'm not, I can't say that I don't have a solution for that. We work really closely with some families, um, to, to help provide, um, hotspots and things like that.
Do we have the ability in each classroom, and I'm assuming that we can record each classroom, right? So even if, if you had, for example, like you said, an AP class that you couldn't have a remote and in-person, that that could at least be recorded and be available asynchronously to those individuals. So I feel like there's some solutions there. That if we went fully in-person five days a week and, and then had a remote option, that we could still provide those options for our high school students. You know, there probably would need to be some flexibility for them to be able to have some one-on-one question time or whatever, group question time for those remote learners with the teacher. But I just, I, I feel really strongly that we need to revisit that, that five days per week option that, that almost everyone around us is doing now except for Champagne Van. That, um.
Laura's Fisher doing five days? Fisher does four with one day remote. So they have five days of instruction, five full days of instruction. Or five hour, yeah, so I mean, four live and one remote, that's five.
How long are their days?
You, is your plan still that the teachers are expected to teach synchronously? I mean, is that your instruction to them?
Well, I, so the plan that we have is not, I, I want to move away from that it's my plan or that it's my direction. Is that reasonable at this point? Cause I'm, I'm not, I'm, the plan that we have in place was put together by our, um, instructional subcommittees this summer. And the plan for second semester is going to be discussed and revisited by, um, a, another group of teachers starting on October 19th. So it's not Lindsay Hall's plan and I'm not directing our teachers to teach in a specific way. Our teacher's voice is, is being heard in terms of putting together, uh, what this looks like.
Okay, so the plan, whoever it is, is the instruction given to the teachers that they are to teach synchronously? This is what I'm trying to figure out. If the, if what you, what are you going to communicate to the parents that the parents should have as an expectation of how the teachers teach?
Honestly, I don't feel prepared to answer that in this moment, and I'm happy to get back to you with more information.
I think just to circle back to what Jeremy started with, I've gotten feedback on this as well. I think we need to do some basic communication with what we might know now, uh, with respect to the survey and make a couple of, I guess, what I would say are assumptions that we can give parents and students. And then if we get data back from people switching that give us different data points, we can make adjustments. Example, I think we need to go forward with the communication that on Friday, at the high school level at least, you can expect a synchronous learning environment for, um, for the second semester. At the junior high, if there's some metric level that would allow us to make decisions to have remote teachers only and in-person teachers only, I think it would be helpful to know what that metric is and be able to say to parents if we were to have 30% of the population at the junior high sign up for remote only, then that would allow, allow us to have teachers teach just remote classes. Uh, if we don't get that level of people signing up, then you can expect a synchronous learning environment. I think it's extraordinarily difficult for anyone to know how to pick for second semester if we don't at least have some broad guidelines. I think one of the other questions that I'm hearing is if we go back into the classroom, I would like to know the specific spacing my child is going to have. Early on, it was clear that if we went back into the classroom, social distancing would not be possible. I think for people who are concerned with social distancing, who enjoyed the hybrid model because it afforded them the social distancing, we owe them some communication about like, does that mean two feet? Does that mean one foot? If we can't give them those kinds of answers and we need to probably make some assumptions, like for example, we have people going in-person now. If we put them all in the classroom together, what does that look like in that classroom? You just make the assumption that everybody who's going with the hybrid plan goes 100% of the time? What does that spacing look like? I've read a lot of emails that talk about people being able to make choices. I think it's really important here that people make informed choices. And I think if we don't give them some level of detail about whether it's synchronous, whether it's asynchronous, what level of body we need in order to offer remote-only teachers, even if that's just by building, we aren't allowing people to make actual informed decisions. If we can't talk to them about what social distancing is going to look like, or if it doesn't exist anymore, we have to be very honest so that people can have their own risk assessment. Because I am for people making choices, but I think they have to be informed choices. So I think we need to do some work very quickly about defining some parameters, maybe by building it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, about what second semester could look like before we ask people to choose. I don't know, I'm getting all the feedback is I don't actually know what I'm picking.
I think it's, um, if it's possible to make an assumption of, of 70% in-person, like Megan said, and 30% remote, would so parents would have some information, what kind of distancing you would expect to have at the high school level. And it's just be, I mean, you can't be, you know, down to every classroom, but in general, that's the distancing you would expect to have at the high school or the junior high and Lincoln Trail. If you were at a 70-30 split, you know, would it be three feet? Would it be four feet? And then you could at least come up with some, an average number that you would expect to see with a 70-30 split that might be helpful for parents to make a decision.
I, I support that. I think that there's no way to have perfect information. And I think all plans will ultimately fail, but, but we have to, but the 70-30, I think is a good rubric to start with. To, to at least do the math in, in, in the classrooms on what, what would this look like? My peculiar question that goes with that is the remote more difficult for any particular subject matter? We, we, from what I've heard, we, we maybe treat this all as if all classes are equal in English or our math. But, but a question would be, does, does math need to be taught differently than social studies or English? And should, should math then have a plan that, that looks different than others? So if, if just one level down, we, we need to think about how we address remote for specific subjects.
I think that's the idea that I was getting at a little bit ago, Merle. Is that different teachers in different disciplines will find that different pedagogies suit them better because of their discipline. But a lot of the feedback that I'm hearing that we're reading as a board seem to me to be, um, surrounding a lack of understanding of the different learning strategies that are being implemented. And that if there was a better communication about the strategies that are being implemented, there might be more satisfaction with the situation. And that, that it seems as though we should allow teachers in different disciplines to have different strategies because different subjects and different disciplines lend themselves better or worse to different situations.
Mr. Schultz, are you under the impression that I was directing teachers to teach synchronously, that that was coming directly from me to teachers?
I believe that I, as a parent, received information from the district saying that my child would be having synchronous learning. And from the feedback we get from many, many parents that you are reading just as well as we are, have a lot of situations where parents are upset and they're describing asynchronous learning and complaining that it's asynchronous. And it, it has occurred to me that one of the issues just might be, I mean, I'm not saying it's the only issue, but one of the issues might be a lack of clarity on the different styles that are being utilized.
Thank you.
I mean, for example, my child is a remote-only student. He synchronously logs into a classroom or a class. Sometimes the teacher gives a little speech, does some teaching, and then has provided a packet for us to go pick up. And then they get offline and they work at home, very much like they're probably doing in the classroom. The teacher's not teaching and instructing for the entire period. But I think some of the expectations, and what I've heard echoes what Colleen is saying, is that the expectation is that the teacher needs to be on the screen actively talking or lecturing for the entire period in order for that to be remote learning or e-learning or any learning for that matter. And I think that that is probably, um, something that we could do a better job of explaining is that it's completely appropriate for a teacher to spend 10 minutes lecturing on a subject and then let the students do some work, and then they come back and circle back. So I do think that there is some communication we could do to help our teachers and our staff with our parent population to set the expectations about what synchronous learning is, that synchronous learning can have some asynchronous components to it, that not all of the learning and certainly not all of the disciplines even lend themselves to all of this. And so that our teachers are making and pivoting on the fly in order to adapt to this environment that we've never had to, uh, really encounter before. But we can message and do some work to help the staff by doing a better job of explaining that just because your child isn't on the screen with a teacher in front of them for the entire 30 or 40 minutes, doesn't mean that there's not learning going on and doesn't mean that even that would be appropriate. I can't imagine what our kids would, would look like after a day of lecturing with someone on the screen the entire time. So I've had similar conversations with parents who have reached out to me to try and understand. I think there's a gap that we have an opportunity to fill. I think there's a gap that we have an opportunity to fill. I think our teachers can help us with that. They're the experts. And then I think what that communication might be, you need to check in, like you said, back to all earlier, with your teacher to understand how they have adjusted to these learning environments and what that means for their classroom, and how that still translates into active learning for the kids.
Thank you.
One of the other questions that I'm hearing that you may not be able to answer, but I think people are wanting an answer to, is if we go back with people in the classroom, how does that impact what happens when we have to quarantine? What is the likelihood that an entire class will now have to quarantine just by virtue of having more bodies in classrooms? And then specifically, if we are making adjustments to the learning style and the e-learning style, how will kids who are quarantined have access to learning during their quarantine? You know, these are, these are some of the questions that I've been hearing that I haven't been able to answer, but I think people are looking for answers for.
Sure. So back on, when we talked, there's a discussion at our, the board meeting on September 14th, Mrs. Bachman and I both said that if you, if we put more kids back into school, then quarantines will be larger than they currently are. But it's always case-by-case dependent, depending on where it occurs and the exposure and how close kids are sitting and the guidance that we're getting from the health department. So I, that's not been anything that has, I mean, that's been out there, that if we put more kids in, then quarantines, there will be more people involved in that, staff and students. In terms of adjustments for kids who are quarantined, we, it looks different at sixth through 12th grade than it does for K5. So sixth through 12th grade has been mostly, you know, kids can transit, if they're not remote learners, or they can just transition to fully remote for the time of their quarantine. And my understanding is at the elementary level that the classroom teacher is, is getting work home to the students. I got, I have to be honest, I can't speak to the specifics of how that's done, but parents work with kids and Mrs. Bachman can inform us on that. Yeah, I actually can speak to that a little bit, just because I wanted to boggle that a little bit, is that Mr. Bachman, for example, has, is working specifically with a couple of teachers to make sure that there are packets available for students who are quarantined, because that's a little bit different situation for those students for 14 days. So they are putting things together at Middletown for students who are quarantined. And I, I can't speak directly to what Mrs. Hunter is doing, but I do know that the teachers have been working with, with families to make sure that the kids are able to do the asynchronous work as they would, like in an afternoon if there are more new students or not. But they're also putting quarantine-type packets together. And at the junior high high school, as Dr. Hall said, they are not counted absent. They simply log in as they would on their off day during their quarantine, so that they're able to continue to learn remotely, as long as they feel well. I mean, we've had several students who were actually ill, and so that's a whole different story. But as long as they're feeling good, they're, they can log in and not be counted as absent.
There's definitely going to be numbers we're going to lose to quarantine, but I think if you look at, we're less than 40% in the classroom right now. That even if you had to spend four weeks in quarantine for a couple of episodes, you're still, you're going to be spending more time in the classroom than you would in our current situation. I mean, it's going to happen. We're, there's other districts around us that have over 100 kids or so in quarantine at any given time, and, you know, they accept that. That's just going to be part of the process and, and keep going.
Because we have to learn and live like this. This is not, you know, who, how many of us thought we'd be sitting here now worrying about something? I mean, I remember where I was when I had my parent conference that night, and everybody was like, hmm, this will be here and go away. It hasn't. So we've got to figure out how to make, we're committed to excellence. We have to figure out how to make our commitment to excellence, work for our families and our students and our staff.
You say 40%, and I, I guess that's not quite the same as the 70-30, but I heard that a couple of classes at the junior high high school, if you was four kids in a class.
No, but I mean, in general, we have, you know, classroom time for people who have chosen the hybrid option is less than 40% of their week is actually spent in-person in class. So if you're going to, if you go to a five-day-per-week model and you lose, you know, a kid loses two weeks of quarantine early in the semester, and then later in the semester, they're still getting more classroom time than what they're currently getting right now.
Yeah, I'm following you.
But Merle, some of those classrooms are pretty small. I walked through it, I saw it. So four, four people in the classroom allows you to socially distance. Even if you doubled that and assumed eight or 12 people, the distancing is very different in those rooms. So I think that's the work that I would like to see done, so that parents actually understand what the distancing looks like, so that they can make a decision that they're comfortable with.
Do we get reports now on how many kids physically in a class, how many get remote for an entire week, some kind of tabular format where you can actually see holes of real small attendance, or whether it's by subject, or whether it's by, I don't know, I can't think what the options would be, but just curious, what the attendance is in person, if you just take a week's spread and see what that looks like. I'm sure there's variety in there. I'm just curious whether the 70-30 rule would be anywhere close to realistic, if we're not looking at that data.
Well, I think we have to understand that parents might have made a choice to go in-person because there was distancing, and they might make a different choice.
Yeah.
There is no distancing, and so those numbers, I don't know that we can assume that those numbers won't shift the other way.
Totally get that. I'm just curious if we had mapped that actual attendance at all.
I have asked for A students, B students, and remote-only numbers per class, but I haven't had a chance to look at that, because I did want to do some of that analysis. So I have asked for that, but I don't know if it exists. I would think it does, but via classless, but it's one of the data points that I was looking at to try and help make decisions about how I would vote, is, you know, understanding when we say distancing as much as possible, that has a definite, that different definition for some of the smaller classrooms. And as I said earlier, I think families have the right to understand the specifics of that so that they can make informed decisions for themselves.
Okay, any other discussion under COVID?
So are we going to be able to go back to the community and have them expect more communication before Friday, or to move that Friday? I don't, I assume we need this information as soon as possible, but I have heard from a significant number of people that they're having a hard time knowing what to say in that survey without these data points. Do we have the ability to get some more specific data out to families?
Yeah, so I, I think there are absolutely are some things we can push out before Friday. I, I think a challenge that we do have is that, especially at the junior high, our classrooms are, come in all different shapes and sizes. To be, to be able to say that what the distance is going to be for each child in each classroom, I honestly, I wouldn't know how to put that together.
I think, I don't know, no one did something with square footage and number of bodies, so maybe we could have an opportunity there to just, you know, simply know square footage of classrooms and number of bodies that would be in it, and that gives us a starting point.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, I can't say that can be done by Friday. We're talking about a lot of rooms, so I mean, we can...
We can generally say that if the percentages hold to where we, where they are now, given that assumption, we're probably going to have about half the distance that we have now, right?
I'd say that is generalizably true.
Right. Correct. I mean, we can, no matter how specific we try to get, we're not going to be able to get.
I think there's, there's some other issues here in terms of teaching and, and definition of some different approaches and providing clarity, different strategies that certainly can, can be done. We, we are going to look at whether we can create remote sections. I mean, I just, at this point, I can't send out an email to parents saying, yes, that's going to happen. I think that there's a desire to do that, and I appreciate that there's a lot of good minds that can work on this and try to figure that out. So I, we'll put, we'll put out as much as we can and, and try to, and get more information out there that'll hopefully help parents make a decision that they're comfortable with.
Realizing, I guess, that if we're able to do remote sessions, well then, there may be some, or not, there may be some people that shift based on how that comes out. Any other comments on this one?
I'd just like to have it on the agenda for next time, to have a vote for five days per week to start second semester. I know we said four days last time, but I just, I just think that we're falling behind. It's mainly about our kids' education than anything else.
And social emotional, Merle, for lack of...
Okay, tonight a closed session is necessary for, number one, litigation, what an action against affecting our behalf of a particular public body is allowed or pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or whether a public body finds an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and ended within the minutes of the closed meeting. Two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in power for creation or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including here in testimony on complaint lodged against an employee, specific individual who serves independent contractor in power for creation or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body. To determine its validity, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
So second.
Second.
The roll call vote, please.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Yes, we'll take a five-minute break. If you're remote, please log out of this link and log in on the closed session link. And to the public, we do not anticipate taking any business action at the end of our closed session. Thanks for tuning in tonight. Have a good evening, everybody.